Well, we do have a quorum. I know Lisa and Colleen are coming. So let's call the meeting to order at 7:12. I am sorry, I apologize for starting a little late, but we had an SU meeting that ran a little long. So, we have a very full agenda tonight. And I welcome everybody to our meeting. Thank you for coming. It's wonderful to have the public as engaged and in attendance as we have tonight. So, the first thing after we call the order is adjustments to the agenda, and I have two. We need to pull 6.1. The policy discussion was not ready in time due to an illness of staff, I believe. So we're gonna pull 6.1, and we're not gonna address that at all. I am going to also pull 6.2, the Heinsberg-Charlotte Resource Collaboration Discussion. We'll postpone that to another meeting. And I need to add a 7.7, which is to discuss and schedule a special meeting on the Australian ballot petition. Yeah, go ahead. Any others?
You can also pull -- excuse me, get to the staff room, it was a mistake. Pull 8.3, Policy Adoption from the Consent Agenda. And you can move 7.4 to 6.5. It's supposed to be discussion, not action.
Can I move?
Yes, you can.
All right. Any others? All right. I am aware of two substantive matters that probably brought people in attendance tonight. The first one, I see Chuck standing here, and I'm gonna invite him to address us during 3.0 Audience and Communications. The other issue that I'm aware of is with respect to class sizes and potential teacher hirings. What I would like to do on that, you're certainly welcome if you want to speak during Audience and Communication time period, but what I was hoping to do was rather let Mr. Goodrow give his principal's report, commenting on how kindergarten registration went and what the school population looks like. And then, when we discuss and react to that, I would invite you to speak on that topic. Does that work? All right. So, Audience and Communications. Chuck?
What we have is a proposal to amend the policy--
Chuck, hold on a second. Jess, do you know who it is?
Yeah, I gave her my name.
Okay.
Chuck Reese, Heinsberg resident. To amend the policy requiring that a staff person be there during a group's activity at the school on after-hours vacation extended vacation periods. I did put together a little proposal that I'd like to submit to the board, and I'll go through it briefly. I didn't make copies for anybody.
Okay.
So, right now, the policy states that a janitor or somebody must be on staff while the school is not in session. And I'd like to describe one event that happened this Saturday. We were actually helping rig up the flying for the play, and there were six dads there, two students, and we were there for a period of about four hours, and we had to pay for a janitor to be there with us. We think this is a little insensitive to groups that would like to use the facility and may not be able to afford the time and half with a janitor, and it may not be fair to janitors to have to come in in periods when they don't wanna be there either. So, the policy that I'm suggesting to amend is there's five components to it. I won't go through all of them. But basically, you can look at that and see if they make sense to you. It makes sense to us. I realize that there may be a security issue, so I'm sensitive to the fact that we wanna be careful who's in our building, and my proposal sort of takes that into account. So, number one, one or two Heinsberg residents 18 years old will be designated as a contact person for the group. Two, the contact persons or persons will go through a security check at all personnel required to an HCS, including fingerprinting and background checks. The contact person will spend a little time at the school, being trained about how the school works, before the group will actually be allowed to use the facility. The group using the facility will be 25 people or fewer, and at least half will be Heinsberg residents. We're thinking that the numbers, if you have small numbers, it makes no sense to have a janitor there when six dads are there rigging up something for a play. So, anyway, the numbers, I think, also lend to the security thing, and if there's fewer people, you can keep track of them. You know, I usually have, come in on vacations, I have a key, I open up one door, I know who comes in, I know who leaves, so I can keep track of them. If it gets bigger than that, you know, you kinda, you can lose track. So, that's why we're suggesting 25 or less. Men's basketball also plays on Thursday nights, and we usually average around 12 to 20 events. This is drama. This is also other groups, mini-metro coming in. These are groups that wanna use the facility that are smaller groups. It just makes sense. And then, third, I know there was some issues, or fourth, I'm sorry, fifth is the issue about the key. So I know there was some talk about the keys floating around, so I think if that contact person is gonna become responsible, they get the key, they can bring it back, you know, the next school day or the next day when somebody's in the office. So, controlling where the keys are, I think, is kinda critical to security also. So that's our proposal. And then, we would not, a janitor would not be required if these conditions are met. Seems logical, and I think we're trying to meet you on the security issues.
If that's the reason, we'll even... Do you know what the logic behind this change was in the first place?
I honestly can't recall. Was it, did the Facilities Committee have anything to do with it?
No, but--
Yeah, we did it here.
We did?
Yeah, and there was an incident of some vandalism at the school, and obviously some concern over security, of knowing who's in the building.
Was the vandalism occurred during a non-school session time?
Yes.
That was my cue.
It was a non-school session time. So, could Mr. Goodrow give a little background on this and the policy that we discussed?
You also have a liability issue with people being in the building without having someone who's familiar with the alarm systems, the electric system. So I think it's more than, it certainly is a security issue. I think there's a liability issue as well. To be honest with you, I've been a building-level principal for many years, and Heinsberg was the first community I came to where we didn't have employees on site when the building was in use. I think the vandalism issue that we had kinda pushed it for me to bring it to the board. But certainly, the board can elect to have its own policies around its building use. I think for the fee that we're charging, which is basically just to cover the wages of the employee, for community groups under this policy, we're not even charging a use fee. So electricity, or heat, or any of those expenses are not even taken into account. So I think you've got a pretty conservative policy that I believe is protecting the property that community members have. And my assumption is that the board is gonna have a conversation around this and determine whether or not they wanna continue with this policy or not. My recommendation is going to be that they continue to utilize the policy that we now have in place. I think there's a real risk in having people in the building and not having an employee who's familiar with the various mechanical systems that we have in the, in the building, and the investment in the property itself.
There also may be an advantage to have a group in there when something goes wrong to make a phone call. We're talking about times when no one's in the building, not even the janitor. So if there's something going wrong, you won't even know about it unless there was an alarm. But if somebody's in there, something goes wrong, I think the risk is pretty low, Bob, to be quite honest.
But, but I think there's a significant risk of vandalism, Chuck, as we've seen--
The vandalism of--
I had forgotten about that, but that is a pretty significant concern of ours. And it's not just a concern in a pipe dream sense. It's happened.
Well, how many times have you had vandalism?
That's something that unfortunately, you guys are now dealing with because some bad apple did that and created a bad environment for what you're asking.
That school's been plagued by vandalism. I mean, I'm part, been involved with the playground too, and we couldn't even keep stuff there because of vandalism. These are kids that are doing this. You're making a policy based on, you know, young kids who just wanna wreak havoc. So I think that's, that's not a really good plan to restrict use of the building, and that's what you're doing. You're restricting the use of the building, not only by the cost, but also by the fact that, why would a janitor wanna come in on a Sunday night to watch us play basketball? That seems silly. I think the policy, I accept the fact that there may be security issues, and what I've put in front of you, I think, is a reasonable compromise to make sure security issues are dealt with.
Okay, and we appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I also don't know if you wanna put a janitor in the position of being a security guard. I mean, right now, when the school is in session, and those doors are open in the evening, and people are coming in and out, anybody could slip in that school, hide something, hide themselves. I mean, this doesn't, this isn't gonna solve a security problem, it seems to me. And what it does do is tell the community to keep out. I'm a taxpayer in this town. I have been for 13 years, ever since I moved here, and I feel like I'm being pushed away, like I've gotta pay money already after being a taxpayer and a citizen of this town to just go and use the basketball gym? It doesn't seem fair. Doesn't seem right to treat people like that for what, I think this can be solved with Chuck's ideas. It seemed like a good one. I think it's good for the community to have a welcoming school. This doesn't feel welcoming. So I want you to think about that one, too. And I think when we've been there for all these years that we've, I've been involved, we've had one door, and you've got eight or more, 12 guys. Somebody's gonna come into that, through that one door, and create a problem, you're gonna have citizens and, you know, adult guys ready to stop whatever might happen through that one door. I don't think we're creating any problem. We clean up after ourselves, we put chairs away after events that aren't ours. We're good citizens. I don't think this is right for us.
I don't think anyone's questioning that, Sam.
Well, and I think it was better than doing it.
I think, I think that there is some degree of consistency in policy, and everyone needs to be treated the same. And I am not ruling out this proposal, which we've been presented with. As Bob said, we'll discuss it, but I don't know what the result will be.
All right. Just think of all the groups, Cub Scouts, the other folks, Drama, I think they're, the martial arts folks, have they ever created any of these problems you're concerned about? I don't think they're the problem. Like what Chuck says is true. You've got kids. Kids are gonna do things, but it's not, these groups that come through, and the mini-metro, all those groups, they're not creating the problem you're worried about. So why punish them?
All right. Any other questions from the board? Go ahead, give it to her.
I'm sorry I was late, so I missed your introduction. Did you discuss the fee schedule, and, you know, what's your sense about that? Do--
The proposal is to have no fee.
Yeah, okay.
Based on the number of people and, you know, how we were going about working through it.
Okay.
Can I ask you, how often are you in the build? Is it a weekly? I don't even, I don't know.
With basketball, it's Thursday nights, but there is a janitor there at 10 o'clock. But there are events, we, for years, have played right through the summer. And we get a key, and we go in and play.
So, so this doesn't impact your normal play during the school year, it's during vacation weeks and in the summer times?
That's right.
Okay.
But I'm also with the Drama program, and we have to have a janitor now to come in to do rigging for the play, which seems a little absurd to me. I just think there has to be a policy that's reasonable for smaller groups that are not gonna be producing any kind of problems. And that's what my proposal is, is, I think, a logical way to go about doing this. Sure. Thanks for hearing us.
I may throw out, Keith, for your consideration, I share the recognition and keep my eye out for various bills that come across. Vermont's had a unique state that has immunity for property owners when they are not charging a fee to use their property. So, I cross-country ski across your field, I injure myself, you're not liable. There was a bill amendment, I believe introduced either today or yesterday, addressing liability for the school district for non-school recreational use. And I would ask you to consider, when you're looking at this, whether the fee charged for janitorial staff payment constitutes a fee creating liability to the school.
No, we didn't.
Wouldn't it be implied that you're allowed usage of the school?
It seemed from the intent of the email that I was reading is to immunize the school for recreational use of the property. But there is that distinction. If I cross-country ski at Sleepy Hollow and I buy a ticket, it's a different liability issue.
I think Colleen raised a point, and I'll let her address it, but this is also, in some respects, bigger than Heinsberg because we're part of the SU. And I think, Colleen, do you wanna speak on the SU policy?
Heinsberg School District being part of Chittenden South Supervisory Union, we have a number of school districts in the Supervisory Union, and a number of years ago, instead of individual school districts trying to deal with policy, we have a policy committee. So if there's a change in policy, or a need for a policy, our protocol is to take that issue, bring it to the policy committee that is comprised of representatives of all the school districts. We chew on that there. It goes back to our individual boards. And I know that this is likely and has been an issue in other school districts in the Supervisory Union. So I would suggest that for us, that we get this on a policy committee agenda and take it from there.
Or at the very least, speak to our fellow SU schools about what they've done in the past.
Right, and it may be that the policy committee decides that it's not something that the Supervisory Union Policy Committee wants to take up, and they'll spit it back out. And seeing as Cindy chairs that committee or facilitates that committee for us, I'm sure you have something to say.
Well, and just sitting here listening, I don't know if this is a change in procedure, which is administrative--
Yes.
--or if it's a change in policy. And without having the policy and procedures in front of me, I don't remember. I don't have all 100 policies in my head.
Yeah.
But yes, it has come up in the most recent school with Charlotte. Also around men's basketball.
Basketball.
And they found it was a procedural issue. So, but I think it's a good--
A procedural.
So--
We'd like to separate procedure from policy. So, policy would be that we have a policy about school use, about use of the facilities, and that we make it available to the community when we can. Procedures will be the rules that we follow, like if, does a form need to be signed, or is there a fee, or whatever.
Sat said, though, with the legislation that has spoken about, I'm, policy-wise, that is something for me, that I've noted that we need to look at--
Yeah.
--as well. But I think, you can go both routes. You can refer to the policy committee, you can, well, three. You can refer to the policy committee, you can refer to me to determine whether it's a procedural issue, and you can also, or have a board discussion and decide which way to go.
You know what, ultimately, Charlotte decided to deal with this?
Theirs was around charging the fee. It wasn't about the access to the building so much. It was actually just charging a fee to community-based programs. And they ended up getting more, more specific discretion to the principal to waive it in certain circumstances, which is what ended up happening. And it was always procedural.
Well, at the very least, thank you. And I hope, at the very least, what you've noticed is a continual trend of what seems simple at first becomes a lot more complicated. Thanks.
Thanks for visiting.
Yep, you're more than welcome to stay, too. So, speaking of staying--
Do you have extra copies?
4.0--
I can keep a couple.
Each of the board members has one. 4.0, the presentations on the curriculum. So I'm very glad that lots of people came out tonight to speak about teacher and class size issues, but you're also gonna hopefully be able to take in the good work that the school is being, is doing. Do you, do you guys wanna segue, or just--
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jess.
Next to me, darling.
Yes, isn't anything public air? We can't hear anything. I don't have any stuff. You can turn that off.
Welcome to our--
Welcome to our world, Ken. That's why we're over here now.
Thank you.
There's a couple of changes.
Changes.
This is when I need my bike.
Why don't we just stay on with our just checking out the--
Teacher voices?
Yes.
All right. We can do that. Thank you.
Did you guys have a couple? Okay. All right, tell them hi. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Nancy Palace. I'm the math coordinator for the building.
I'm Betsy Knox, literacy coordinator for the building. It's nice to have such a nice group to see our presentation.
I know. We don't often have, have such a nice-- I have a few extra copies if anybody wants to--
We usually don't have slits in the crowd to see our data. We're thrilled.
Well, that's good. That's good. Everybody works hard. So, year, every year, we start off with this slide because it's a really important one. And what this is talking about is this triangulation of data that we collect over time every year. And that, for those of you who haven't seen this before, we have things that are local assessments based on Heinsberg, we have classroom-level assessments, and then we have stuff that's mandated from the state. And all of those things impact student performance, content, and skills, and it impacts what teachers do for their instruction. So mainly, what we're going to talk about tonight is this category right here, which is state assessment, but it's only one piece. And we just wanna be mindful that it's just one piece of a much larger situation. So this year, the big picture of NECAP, which is our big state assessment, that happens in October, but we don't get results until end of January, early February. So this is, this is what happened just for this year. So if you look at the HCS column, 77% of our students in our whole school met or exceeded the standard. And likewise, 85% for reading and 61% for writing. And if you compare those numbers, we're doing very well, considerably well compared to Vermont in most cases, and, and yes, the SU were pretty much at par. And we'll talk a little bit more about this number a few slides later.
And--
So taking a closer look--
Nancy, that's for all the grades that take--
All grades, 3 through 8. That's whole school, big picture, yeah.
You might, you might give a little bit of background on NECAPs.
Yeah, sure. So NECAP, New England Common Assessment Program, over in our eighth year, I think, maybe, something like that. It's most of the New England states, and it is the, instead of having the fill-in-the-dot, I can't even remember, Iowa state test, this is what we use for our accountability for growth, annual growth of our students. And so, only students in grades 3 through 8 take it. There's a reading portion. It's about a three-day, three-or-four-day experience, depending on what grade you are in. Reading, math for all those grades, 3 through 8, and then writing only in grades 5 and 8. The interesting thing about this assessment, though, is that when a fourth grader is taking the assessment in October, they're getting assessed on third-grade material. It's the year-previous material, as opposed to when we used to take tests, it was on that grade-level material. So that's kind of a shift in thinking from what we've been used to in years past. If you have any questions, just jump in. All right, we'll go back to--
Well, I didn't get a chance to--
So, this slide is showing how we've done three years in a row. So NECAP is such a big-picture test that we really look for trends. You can't, when something happens one year, it's really hard to, you can't really pick it apart and say, oh, this is what happened this year. But we, we make assumptions, and sometimes they're great, and sometimes they're not. But what we look for are trends. So if you look at reading going across, it looks like our population is really growing. A few percentages is a big deal, a few percentage points. In math, we're growing slowly. In writing, we are definitely growing in eighth-grade writing, and we're not in fifth-grade writing. And this is something that is what we need to pay attention to. When we see something like this, it's sort of like, okay, what's going on? And so we'll talk more about that when we get to the writing side. Okay, go ahead.
Nancy, I have a question. Could you flip back one?
Yep.
This slide, I just wanted--
We'll come there. She's got there.
Sorry.
My, I'm driving along here.
We're used to.
I bet you can use arrows on the keyboard, too.
Thank you.
That's a little bit easier.
Go back one. That is much easier.
So my question is, you've got cohorts right there between your 10 and 11-year-olds, your 11 to 12, and your 12 to 11.
No, this is--
Okay, secondary years is years. This is your 2010, 2011.
Okay.
This is a different-- All right, 2010, 11. So as a whole school, in 2010, 2011--
Right.
2011, 2012, and I'm so glad you mentioned that.
It's the same child moving, same cohort moving across time. So when you said growing--
No.
It's not the same, it's not the same population of kids in the grade level. You're gonna be off by one grade each, and a new grade comes in.
So they can't really get compared to each other, then?
You can't do that on this slide. We do do that later.
Oh, I heard you say that. That's what I--
It's, what we're doing is saying here, as a 3 through 8 assessed population, 80% of them met in, or exceeded the standard. The next year, our whole 3 through 8 population again, new kids, third graders are taking it for the first time, okay? 81% of that population met or exceeded the standard. This year, 85% of our whole population for this year almost. Okay. I'm glad you raised that question. That was heading to very misleading. I never would have thought of that. Okay, now we can go ahead.
This is the slide--
Your idea, I think you were interested in.
This is our cohort data.
Okay. So this is looking at our third graders back in 2007, and where they are as eighth graders now. And what we like to see, and we're pretty proud of, is that the numbers below proficiency are shrinking, and the numbers above proficiency, and particularly in proficiency with distinction, are growing. And this is the same exact students who have been with us for third grade, fourth grade, all the way through. So this is evidence that our, excuse me, 3 through 8, K through 8 program is working.
Okay? Yep.
In addition, it also, it takes into account kids that transfer in. So I mean, more or less, it's the same cohort, but you'll get a few that transfer out and a few that transfer in, and those we--
They pulled them out, I think. It was this exact same--
Oh, they pulled them out?
43 students were kids.
Yep.
We'll consume.
We wanna make sure that the same group, we're measuring the same group, so we're apples to apples.
Perfect.
So, Betsy, this is our current eighth-grade class, or is this our ninth-grade class?
That's our current eighth-grade.
Okay.
Do you also wanna explain why they set up video, and I started by the colors about the proficiency?
Yes. These are the, this is the band of proficiency right here. So if you were in an earlier presentation, this is a score point one, this is a--
in socioeconomic status. So that is part of the work that we do when we meet with data teams and really delving in very closely to what are they doing. How many students aren't accounted for, for like alternative assessments?
Very low.
Very low.
Two, I believe.
Is this for an IEP in reading alone, or an IEP in other content areas? IEP in reading, because they report that data out for us in the reading. When you say IEP, I mean, it could be, you know, a whole profile of problems that the child might be experiencing. And so if they have one in other areas that don't impact reading, and you're measuring them and counting them in, I'm just asking if they are. When we go to fill in the bubble sheets for the Kneecap, we have to identify what their IEP is in. So a student may have an IEP in math but not in reading. They would not be on this slide. This is only students that have IEPs in reading designated on their Kneecap assessment when they take it. And this is our SES students with socioeconomic status. Again, an area that we've been paying very close attention to when we look at our data. And it's exciting to see that we are making some changes. If you look over the last couple of years, you see these numbers are shrinking and these numbers are growing. And a couple of numbers behind, or behind the data is, you know, I looked at some of our fifth graders, and some of them went from a 36, which is below the standard, to a 47, or a 50, 54, which is a proficient with distinction, to a 58, again, proficient with distinction. So that's part of the job that we do, is we look even closer behind these numbers to see who the kids are, what is the programming that's been in place for them. And here's an example of some of the programming that we are doing and some of the work that I do with teachers. Reading Plus is a new intervention program that we have been using with sixth graders this year. We piloted with a couple of children last year. We have it with third graders, and we keep trying to expand that program. When you have a new program that comes into your building, it takes a lot of work and energy to implement it, meeting with teams, meeting with the Reading Plus folks. So that's where I've spent a lot of my energy, as well as the Read 180 Next Generation. That's another intervention program that we started last year with our fifth-grade cohort group of children. We're using it with students this year as well. And again, when you have a new program, you need to train your staff so they get up to speed. And many of these programs are all, not all, but a lot of the database work that you do in terms of loading the students into the program, looking at the data, you have to be pretty skilled at accessing that on the computer. So there's a little bit of a learning curve. And this is our LLI program that we're using with students in first, second, third grade, and we're seeing some really nice gains with that, and best practices in instruction, readers theater, and sort of success. We have a lot going on, a lot of balls in the air, but you need to, because one program, like Reading Plus, is not going to do what it needs to do for all children. All children don't fit into this program. You have to look at what their needs are.
So moving to math. This is the same slide you saw before for reading. This is the same group of eighth graders, current eighth graders where they were. And it's growing, albeit very slowly, but it's going in the right direction, so we like that. What we do notice is the percentages down here are shrinking, and that's our biggest concern. We do have kids shifting in between these levels, but this is meeting, this is exceeding. So as long as they're, they're, we're good. All right. So this is this year's three-through-eight. We went up by 1%, which isn't great, but when you think about your whole population, that's, it's okay. And one of the, as Betsy said, one of the things we do is we dive way closer into this data than this big picture. So I just wanted to give you an example. So for grade four students, where their percentage actually went down just a little bit this year, we had six students, which is a lot, in one grade level, that went from meeting the standard to exceeding the standard. And that doesn't, you know, that doesn't show up in our annual growth percentages, because we're really focusing so much on getting these kids up. But it's cause for celebration. These kids are really improving. We had nine students in fourth grade who went from the green to the red, but you don't see that here. So that's why we spend a lot of time looking at with that really close lens and looking at the data with teachers so that they know what kids are doing, what they're not doing, what they're doing well in, what they're not doing well in. And that's how they improve their instruction. So, next slide. Students who have an individual education plan. It's growing. I mean, you can see right there, we have an 8% increase. Actually, no, I'm looking at the wrong number there. It's 5% increase who are meeting or exceeding the standard. One of the reasons, when we think about that, one of the reasons we wonder, anytime you use statistics in any way, you can't say, well, this is the reason why it happened, but you can, it makes you think. It makes you, you know, take a good look at what you're doing in your programming and what might cause this to happen. We have a system of co-teaching where special educators are in the classroom, in different classrooms with regular education teachers, because there's more of a partnership going on to meet kids' needs. We wonder, we have one pair of teachers who's been doing this, this is, I think, their fourth year, so it's really becoming sort of a solid partnership. Maybe that's why. You know, that's one thing that we're thinking about. I do know that as of this year, all of our teachers are involved in best practices in math, in delivering math instruction, which is ongoing professional development. This is the most amazing thing I've ever seen in my life, because it's changing the way instruction is being done, not only in the math classroom, but across the board in literacy classrooms and science as well. It's a way of thinking about leveling the playing field for all students, so all students have access to learn. And I'm really hopeful, and I do have a sense that that may be contributing to some of these populations improving. Next slide, SES population, didn't show as much improvement we would like. We're taking, we're taking a closer look at that. Again, I have lots of, you know, grade-level-specific movement of students, but we do have kids who are moving in and out of those bands. It's just not enough to take the whole three-through-eight numbers up. So go ahead.
When you say SES, you're referring to lower socioeconomic status?
Yeah. Students who are falling in a category of free and reduced lunch. Yeah. So it's lower socioeconomic category because they fall in...
Everyone has an SES, right? I was just, I wanted to check on that.
That's true. Thank you.
But my other question was, do any of these children also cross over into the IEP?
Yes.
Or is that part of it?
Yes.
Okay, so it's hard to tease out which of the factors, or it might be at play here.
Yeah.
Obviously, you have to mind back.
The IEP, the student, the slide with the individual education plan may or may not have the status attached, but these are not students who only, are these students, am I wrong?
No, when Betsy and Nancy take a look at all the data, they can get to that point.
Yeah, we can tease that out.
They can tease that out pretty easily about, let's just take a look at, they can take a look at all the SES population, the free and reduced lunch population. They can take a look at the free and reduced lunch population with the IEPs and without the IEPs, so that they're able to disaggregate the data a million different ways.
Yeah. But for this, for this one...
And you also, the reason for doing that, I would think, would be to find some, a variable that you can actually influence. And socioeconomic status is a little hard to influence over...
Well, there are things that are, there are things that are in our control and things that are not. I think that's what, but what we, that is the population that, and maybe Bob, you can help me out with this, we're assessed on our adequate yearly progress. We have to make, at the school, we have to make a certain amount of gain every year, and there's all these formulas that I don't even understand. But the area in which we have not been making the growth that we'd like to see is this population of students. So we look now, we look really closely at that population of students, and we ask, what are we doing? What are we not doing? What can we be doing? What needs to change? How, when? We've never really done that kind of planning, because we, we need to, but that's the area that we have to improve. So we are spending a lot of time with this particular population. The, like I said, the work we do this year, we won't be able to find out if it's having any impact until next year, which is unfortunate, the way that works. Yeah.
Just mention that you're spending a lot of time looking at that and a lot of time working on certain populations and things like that. Is there an analysis of return on investment? Like, is this attached to financials and is there data on that?
I'm not sure why I'm asking that question.
Well, I mean, is that something you're doing data analysis, is that data that you look at and where you're investing and what the return is?
So, let me just give you a broader picture. In an earlier slide here, it talked about tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions. Tier one is what classroom teachers provide to all kids in the classroom. In this model, that's what tier one instruction is, the initial instruction that a child receives. Historically, what we've done in schools is we've pulled kids out of initial instruction, and we've given them a separate program if they're, if they're in need of services. What the research is showing us is that what that does for that child is cause transitions. They miss out on that best initial instruction. So the model that we're, we've been working on here in the last three or four years is improving best initial instruction for all kids. And we're trying to limit the amount of pull-out that we do for kids, because those kids that are challenged by the curriculum, if they're not part of the initial instruction, when they come back 40 minutes later, they're having to deal with not getting what kids who were in the classroom received. And we're finding that this model, at least in our initial analysis of it, is working better. What's gonna make everyone successful is best instruction on the part of everyone. So one of the ways that we're finding in this best practice work that we're doing is, and I'll use math as an example. When I went to school and you went to math class, there was a right or there was a wrong answer. And if you had a wrong answer, you just waited for somebody to tell you the right answer. How we're talking about math today is mathematicians make mistakes. So if we make a mistake, we talk about what can we do to change it, and it's okay to change your mind as a mathematician. Rather than asking one child to respond to a question, we're pairing kids up and we're having them talk about their thinking with one another. That way, everybody's involved in the conversation. You're not off the hook because someone else gave the answer. That level of engagement, and it not only applies to math, but to any content area, the more you can engage kids in the learning, hopefully, the better the results are gonna be at the end of the day. So rather than segregating staff and segregating kids based on needs, we really have a collaborative climate where folks are, kids and adults are supporting one another in terms of improving the instruction for all kids. And there was a day, for those of us who don't have as much hair as others, that, you know, we were perfectly okay with three kids out of 10 failing. That was not a big deal. If we had three kids who didn't make it out of 10, we were doing okay. Y'all remember that bell curve that was evident in the 60s and even 70s? The expectation is now that we're gonna have all kids meet the standard, not just 70% of them. And I think it's wonderful that we've evolved to that place. And it isn't necessarily a program that's gonna solve it for a child. I think it was Betsy just indicated that we have different things that we do with different types of learners. What we're trying to do is we're trying to find what's gonna motivate or fit a child in order to engage them in the curriculum. So we have different programs that we can lean on in order to hopefully engage that child in the learning process. Does that help?
So I think quickly, one, you, for the IEP kids, you were asking about the financial return.
And I'm not just saying in one population, I'm talking about across the board, representing data, and I was wondering if that data's looked at in connection with financial investment.
Yeah, so the IEP services are mandated, like the services that go along with the IEP, kids, we don't have a choice on those. And then what we're finding with the lower SES, the free and reduced lunch kids, is that the research is showing us these best instructional practices for those kids works for all kids. So when we invest the money into the free and reduced lunch population, it's actually benefiting the whole school. So I think that's what Bob was saying, is that it's, it's really hard to disaggregate because the interventions and the services and the best first instruction that we're putting forward, even though it's targeted at one group of students, it's really benefiting the whole school.
Well, I would, I would say, as a board, we have made investments in our literacy coordinator and our math coordinator and in the Bridges program, and we expect to see results. And these, fortunately, the data in front of us is showing that we are seeing results, so.
And I think some of the, the, right now, our school for this, for the Studio program, which Bob has indicated and so did Jeff, that, we have teachers who are in their first year, they've just taken the course this year, and they, they just entered this program of Studio, which means that they have ongoing, four times a year, professional development, which keeps us in, four times a year for three years, over and over and over again, reminding them of those instructional practices. They, next, they're learning on this year's kids, so we won't see anything until next year for that first year. And I have a really great slide that's coming up, that's gonna show you for our second, what's happening... is that the research is showing us these best instructional practices for those kids works for all kids. So when we invest the money into the, the free and reduced lunch population, it's actually benefiting the whole school. So I think that's what Bob was saying, is that it's, it's really hard to disaggregate because the, the interventions and the services and the, the best first instruction that we're putting forward, even though it's targeted at one group of students, it's really benefiting the whole school.
Well, I would, I would say as a board, we have made investments in our literacy coordinator and our math coordinator and in the Bridges program, and we expect to see results. And these, fortunately, the data in front of us is showing that we are seeing results, so.
And I think some of the, the, right now, our school for this, for the studio program, which Bob has indicated and so did Jeff, that, we have teachers who are in their first year. They've just taken the course this year and they, they just entered this program of studio, which means that they have ongoing, four times a year professional development, which keeps us in, four times a year for three years, over and over and over again, reminding them of those instructional practices. They, next, they're learning on this year's kids, so we won't see anything until next year for that first year. And I have a really great slide that's coming up that's gonna show you for our second, what's happening because our second grade teachers and our third grade teachers are both in their second year of this program. And I feel like that data is speaking pretty loudly that something's working. Again, you know, you're, you're making assumptions. But I have to tell you, I may not be able to quantify this, but when a kindergartner comes up to me and says, you know, Mrs. Pollak, we made a conjecture and this is what it is. And when I say conjecture, I'm saying that's the terminology they're using and they're all over the wall. Yesterday, I worked with a group of first graders who made a conjecture about shapes and it was like, duh, Mrs. Pollak, if you know how many vertices it, then you know how many sides are on the shape. And then you know the shape name because you know how many sides. And, you know, we have these written down. And they're looking at me like, don't you know that? I mean, and when they come up to me and they say with, you know, that emphatic tone, I realize we're making a difference, big time. And I can't measure that really, you know, I don't have, but I feel strongly that, not only in math, because I'm in a lot of classrooms, that things are moving in the right direction. And teachers have been teaching, a lot of our teachers have been teaching a long time. And to make these incredible changes takes a little bit of time, but it's working. I think it's working. And a lot of this is all centered around, as in Betsy's slide, the Common Core. We, we have to make some of these changes. And the work that we're doing through this directly relates to what the Common Core is telling us that all kids need to have and will be assessed on. Oh, so here it is. This is the slide that I'm really excited about. So, this year, I put the years, not age, two years. All right, so this year's grade three got sixty-eight, I'm sorry, 2011, 2012, grade three, got sixty-eight percent of their students meeting or exceeding the standard. Can you click? Just click. Okay, so these students did not have any exposure to best practice instruction when they were in grade two. Okay, hit it again. Over here, this same group of kids, the next year, after they had one full year of exposure to best practices instruction in grade, in grade three, they went up eleven percentage points. I feel like that's pretty darn good. I'm very excited about that. So that's the same group of kids. So click one more time. These are not the same group of kids. This is a different group of third graders this year, but they had a full year of best practices instruction in grade two. They went up eleven. It just so happens to be the same number, eleven percent. So next year, and the third grader will have had two years of this instruction, you know, exposure. So, we won't keep making jumps like that. I, maybe we will.
I did the math.
I hope to be standing here next year and say, see, I told you. But, you know, but to me, when I, when I started looking and I saw that, I was like, you know, that's about the best answer I can give you, you know. I do think the financial reward, the reward for the financial investment is coming. It is coming, so. Fact fluency, I, I get, parents are constantly calling me and saying all these things about some of our fact fluency programs. It, we have goals around fact fluency, which is a very small piece of our math picture. And I felt it, it was what our action plan was on, so I did wanna share with you very quickly. So I'm not gonna go through every little piece, but this is comparison of two years. The end of two years ago, how many kids in a grade level were meeting the standard for knowing, in this case, addition facts? Last year, at the end of the year, how many second graders were meeting or exceeding, or meeting what we thought was the standard for knowing their addition fact? So this second bar, we want the second bar to be higher because we're really paying attention to it. So we have grade two, three, and four, addition facts, subtraction facts. It looks like things are making, we're paying attention, it's making a difference. Grade four is a little concerning. I'm having some conversations with teachers as to why that is. They also have to be working on multiplication. And we had some data missing, so I can't share the multiplication data with you. But they don't pay as much attention to addition and subtraction because they're focusing on multiplication. And you'll see the five, six, five through eight data here. And this is what we would like to see, the second year bars are higher. This year, we're using this program called Fast Math. It's improved, it's better, we can do it at home, we can do it at school. I just gave out awards for high usage this, for March. This week, I gave out awards. We had classrooms where, five classrooms had seventy-five percent or more of their students on, at least four times a week, every week for the entire month. That is huge. Beginning of the year, we would have two students, maybe one or, so they're battling to be the class with the top number of students, and it's great, that's great. Kids come up in the hallway saying, oh, my friend passed! You know, that's good, so.
Is that fourth, yeah, Betsy. Is that fourth grade class the class that everyone's kids in that's overflowing? Like, there's one class that's overly, there's one class at Heinsberg I know, Keith Sun's in it, and where he's...
That's second grade.
Oh, that's second?
Second grade. Fourth grade class, fourth grade class.
Fourth grade is one of our lowest ratios.
Yeah, they have about eighteen, eighteen kids.
Are they going into a big class next year?
I think we're jumping ahead.
I'm wondering if it shows.
We'll get there, we'll get there.
This is a tougher slide to share with you. If you were in the presentation earlier with Molly about the district writing at grade five, we are following along with the rest of the district. We know that we need to be taking a closer look at our writing in grade, it's grade four content. It's tested in the beginning of grade five. We have, I have talked with our fourth grade teachers and our fifth grade teachers about this data. We've been looking at it pretty closely. A lot of it, we have a couple of things we're thinking about. A lot is format of the test. It's an extended writing piece. It happens, they've done the reading test, which is two sessions. They've done the math, which is three sessions. And then they do the writing in fifth grade. And so we're thinking about how can we, next year in our schedule, build in maybe a little bit more, you know, a couple day break so that we can get people jazzed up again. So there's a lot of things we're looking at. We're looking at our fourth grade in the last four or five years. We've had change in staff at fourth grade. Might that have had something to do with it? We're not sure. So this is an area we are paying very close attention to. Our summer CSSU work in service in August is around writing informational text. And we will be doing work across the district with our other schools in this very calendar.
Okay, and this goes along with...
And this goes along with it. When we look at our data teamwork, and this is the work that Nancy and I do with grade level teams, where we look at our data, here's an example of what we ask them to do. Look at the names of your students who scored twos and ones on your achievement. You know, who are they? Are they receiving services? What's going on for them? And we're using our math language, private reasoning time. We're asking teachers to think about what, what your observations are. And then in literacy, we're paying very close attention to what's called a constructed response, which is writing a well-developed paragraph using evidence. And so those are some other examples of things that we are doing, so.
Better news?
The, the grade eight writing is looking stronger, which is, which is really good news, so. The also, the thing to think about with the kneecap is it is a moving target. We have our GEs, which is our curriculum that we need to be teaching, but it could have a narrative piece of writing, it could have a response to informational text. It could provide a chart of information and students have to read the chart and then use that information to write an extended response. Extended response, think five paragraph essay. You don't know what's gonna be on the kneecap because it is a moving target. You know that in your program and in your curriculum, you need to be exposing children to all those different types of writing for different purposes, using different graphic organizers, using different structures. You know, we have work to do. This is our science data for grade four. And so again, this is different groups of children each year. So we have different group last year than we did this year. I know right now, our fourth grade teachers are spending quite a bit of time with science in particular. It is a K-four science test. I wanna remind people of that, that it's not just looking at fourth grade content. It's K-four. So light and energy, or, or light and sound might be something that they learned in second grade and they really haven't revisited it much prior to the fourth grade kneecap. So those are some of the challenges of, of the science kneecap. And we're working with those challenges. And this is our eighth grade data, which has been a nice, a nice growth there. And a lot of the work that they need to do with eighth grade data is using evidence, using their data in their writing, in conclusion paragraphs. In fact, I'm working with Stephanie right now on the CSSU science assessment, helping her score those paragraphs because there's a lot of writing there, so.
One thing that Stephanie, who's sort of a point person for science in the building, wanted me to share with you was that there's four different aspects of the science that are being assessed. And it's physical science, earth-based, life, and life skill, I don't know, life science.
Life sciences.
And inquiry, which is the process by which we do and learn science. And we have had higher scores in all of those domains this year than any other year. And inquiry, over the past four years, has been the biggest chunk. It's like, we're really focusing on it and it's what we pay attention to. We, we have, we reap the benefits from. So she wanted me to make sure that you knew that we're focusing on inquiry, we're doing really well in it, we keep testing well in it. We had a twelve percent increase from last year in our students who were proficient and above. So, so that's pretty exciting work.
And if I could just mention, I, I'm really happy to see that little jump from 2011, 2012. We made a conscious decision to have Steph, who is our lead science teacher, only teach science. So we reconfigured last year, so she teaches science in seventh and eighth grade. And that, so 2011 really wouldn't have reflected, the first year that would reflect if that change made a difference, was 2012 and it, obviously it did, so it's really...
If we can assume, one thing, you know, we, we hope that...
You're trying to burst my bubble.
I'm talking about, okay, so. This is our work. So this is the work that we're, we're continuing to do. These are just symbols you saw, we're looking at all our assessments. We're looking at our assessment calendar over the year. This is the science piece. We, we have the, we've been working on science, we're working on technology. We're definitely working in the math. The engineering piece is the piece that Stephanie is making us aware of now, that we sort of need to bring in that piece. I'm not sure what that looks like yet. We talked about the studio program. We are really looking at data. This is an actual sheet, the colors all mean something. This is data that teachers were looking at last week. And then they're making instructional decisions based on what they see. This is huge, coming up for everyone. We have our Common Core standards and in one and a half years, what Betsy was referring to is our GEs will no longer be our standards that we're being assessed on. It will be these Common Core state, the state standards, which are common through most of the United States. And with that comes a new set of, a new assessment system, which will begin in the spring of 2014, 2015. So then we're back to a spring assessment, which will be, a fourth grader will be assessed in the spring on fourth grade material, kind of like what we were used to. So that'll be another, a little shift, so we'll have a little gap of data when we make that switch. So we're, we're, people are working hard, the kids are working hard, faculty is working hard. But I, I think we are moving in the right direction.
Any questions for us?
Okay?
Great job.
Question?
Try to talk fast. If it was fast enough.
I was told to go fast.
Does anybody need a projector on?
Thank you, that's easy, thank you.
You're welcome. It was a pleasure.
All right, moving on, covering ground, 5.0 reports to the board, 5.1 principals' report, Mr. Goodrow. There is a report in our packet, for those of you who have a packet or who don't have one. There's a report every month that Mr. Goodrow gives to the board, but we always ask him if he wants to elaborate any.
And I, I will, I will elaborate a little bit here. So we held our kindergarten registration at the end of March. I reported to you that our, our numbers back in January, based on census information that we collect at school, we were looking at high fifties, low sixties as a potential class size for our kindergarten for next year. It actually came in at sixty-eight. I would like to suggest that we make that a discussion item for next month's meeting in terms of how we as a school community respond to that increase in numbers. Historically, from year to year, whatever number we have after the registration period has a tendency to fluctuate by three to five kids one way or the other. So I think that sixty-eight is, is a good solid number and we'll probably see it move somewhat between now and the actual start of school in August. I looked back for the last couple of years to see what the variable was from our actual registration numbers to the numbers for opening of school. And we had one year in the last three where the number went down by a couple of kids. The other two years, it went up by a couple of kids. So there's a delta there that kind of floats back and forth. I have come to the conclusion that the work that is done on projecting enrollments due to birth rates for Heinsberg in the last couple of years, it just hasn't worked. So we have people moving into the community that are offsetting those birth rate numbers. If we'd have gone with, just think of the damn pickle we'd be in if we hadn't done registration in March and we just waited and did it at the end of the school year. Bill Smith's numbers based on birth rates would have indicated that our incoming kindergarten was gonna be between forty-eight and fifty. So we have a very positive problem in Heinsberg in that we're not suffering from a declining enrollment. We're actually going in, in the opposite direction. So I'd like, I'd like some time to think about this and come back to you and have a discussion about what the options are for us at next month's meeting. The other big news this week is our huge spring musical kicked off today. We had our first dress rehearsal, so our K-four kids got to watch. And there are rave reviews about that, so I would make a plug to all of you to either come to Friday nights or Saturday's matinee or the Saturday evening program. Our little, our little duffer has had a great time today and it really was well received. I'll answer any questions you might have on the rest of it.
Do you guys have any questions to ask Mr. Goodrow before I throw it to them? Go ahead, Bill.
Would it make sense, and I don't know how this works operationally, to do the kindergarten registration even earlier so we can inform the budget? We're doing our budgeting process, we could, we could consider that instead of...
Now you know why I don't have any hair.
Chasing our own tail. Is that, is that possible? What are your thoughts on that?
I think if you do it much earlier than this, you're probably gonna be working with a bigger delta. I mean, I, for those of you who aren't familiar with the schoolhouse, you know, sometimes I don't view myself as a building principal. I, I view myself as a motel owner. I have people check in and check out on... I have people check in and check out on a daily basis, and I think if we do it too early, Bill, we're going to be suspect because the numbers are going to change moving forward. I think if, if you, I think what's, what's made it helpful to us is to do a good job of canvassing our childcare providers in the fall to determine that the census information that we have is accurate. Up until about four years ago, we were really depending on Bill Smith to give us the numbers. And when I got surprised by our current wildcard group, I said, wait a minute, this isn't working. So now we canvass, and that's, we canvass all the home care providers, we make sure that the kids that they have that live in Heinsberg that fall within the birth dates that make them eligible for kindergarten, that we have them in the system. So I think, Bill, that I probably wouldn't mess with it much more than that, but at the budget building time, that we make sure we've done the canvassing of the childcare providers to make sure that the board has the best numbers that they could have. So we, in January, I told you, we, we had confirmed 58 kids on that list. If you'd asked me in January, is it going to grow by 10, I would have said, no, I don't think it'll grow by 10. I might have said, you know, give it five, I would have come in at 63 to 65. There's no way I would have guessed that it was going to grow by 10.
In the past, we used to differentiate private school versus public school, or private enrollment versus public enrollment. I don't know if we've done that in recent years, but I'm thinking that with the economy, it may be that we're seeing more kids because whereas kids may have, parents may have had their kids in a private setting, with the economy, they may be having their kids go public. And I don't know if that's moving our numbers in any way or not, or if there's any way to compare current to past. Don't know.
I think you also saw a shift when we went to full day kindergarten.
Right.
Because for those families who went, I also think there was a shift at full day kindergarten from private kindergarten education. So I think that's where you're seeing a good shift. I have, I do have a question. Of the 68 students you had registered, have we ascertained that they're all Heinsberg residents? And also have you looked at the number of children who are post-September 1 cutoff?
They're all within the legal, there are no, there are no early birthdays, or late birthdays.
Late birthdays, none, zero.
None after September 1.
I have a request on my desk from a parent who has a September birthday that would like their child considered for this class, but none of that 68 are after September 1.
But we do, but they're all, they're all Heinsberg residents?
That's what they all put on their registration form.
Yep.
I have one question, just to put everything on the table. Is it possible that there might be more in next year's kindergarten class because of retentions?
We have, in our current kindergarten, we have three youngsters that could potentially be retained. That decision will be made between now and the end of the year.
So while a decision hasn't been made, that would increase it to 71?
That's correct.
I have two things before I throw it to the audience. Where your board, we're here to listen to you. I, a little birdie told me why. I think most of you are here, so I have a suspicion. We'd like to hear from everyone, but given the hour and the number of people, which we're of course delighted to have this many people here, because usually they're all empty seats. So we'd like to hear from everybody, but keep in mind that I do want to give everyone a chance to talk, so try to keep your remarks on, on the, on the brief side. The second thing is, while I have an audience, I'll at least say this, I have gotten several direct emails and also some indirect emails, and while I have an audience, and just so you know directly, or you can report to our neighbors when they complain about how I haven't responded to an email, we are bound by Vermont's open meeting law, so, and as board members, we can't speak for the board individually. So the protocol for emails is when I, well, the emails go to the board chair, and all I can really do is acknowledge it, so I will write back, and sometimes I forget, or I forget that I've done it or not done it, but I will write back and acknowledge that I've received it, and I then forward it on to the other board members. But we can't discuss or communicate substantive matters via email because that would violate Vermont's open meeting law. We have to do it in an open meeting. So if, I do have a couple of emails that I've forwarded to the board, and if the substance of those emails isn't covered by your comments, I might bring them up, but we'll cross that bridge when we get there. So I don't know how you want to choreograph this, but I welcome, I give you the opportunity to welcome your participation.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm aware that the state of Vermont has, the Department of Education has class size policy guidelines. Has such a guideline on class size been adopted by Jinnin South Supervisory Union?
Yes.
And what does it, and what does it say? Is it the same as what the state of Vermont says?
I believe that we're adopted the model which is the state, which would be the same number. You may want to go to the next person.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
I guess I will be brief and respect everyone else's wishes to talk here. I'm Scott Alexander, my daughter will be, my oldest daughter will be in kindergarten next year here at HCS, and I am definitely opposed to a class size that exceeds the state's guidelines, which what they say is 20 or higher is, is beyond the recommended limit of students per, per teacher. I've got a whole host of other justifications on why I think that should be the case, but plain and simple, it's, it's, it degrades the quality of the education that the kids receive, and it affects them through their whole life. This is not just a, you know, kindergarten decision. The kids are affected their whole life. I'll leave it at that.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. Mr. Alexander, I have a daughter going to kindergarten, too. Just so everyone knows that, so...
That's good to know.
We'll probably get to know you.
Shalom's concerned, and I also have two daughters in the fourth grade class, which is, I have a new kid last week come in, so, so, just so you know, I'm, I have a same concern.
And I'd like to apologize for needing to leave early, but childcare dictates that, so I'm going to have to duck out here in a second.
Is there someone before me?
Yeah, I mean, I, the other ground rule, I guess I just do, I think everyone knows this, but I just want to give everyone the opportunity to speak, so in addition to being brief, if you could give everyone a chance to speak before you chime in with additional comments, I think that would help. So, you know, I'm happy to recognize people, I don't necessarily need to be that formal. If people can coordinate how they want to do this, if I need to call on people and recognize them, I will, but if we can keep this a little bit more, less formal, I'm happy to do that, too. So I, you know, I, it's a board meeting, so we need to maintain a sense of decorum, but I also don't think it needs to be incredibly formal.
I know there's petition out there, and I know I'm not in favor of class sizes the way they're heading, and I wouldn't want to be in your seats right now at all, because I think you're in a tough spot right now. There are community members out there that cannot afford, can barely afford the 10 and a half percent that's gone up there. And I also don't think you're going to see such great scores continue when you've jumped your class sizes so large with the needs of the population that Heinsberg has, and some of the cohorts that were showing up that have made great improvement from third to eighth grade, we're part of multi-age and part of 18, 16 class sizes, not part of 25, 24. And I would implore you as a group to come together and figure out, we've got this budget in place, it is what it is, we can't go to the community, I don't feel you can, and ask without getting turned down. How can we take what we've got for staff and be creative, let's think outside the box? How can we move people around and make our class numbers a little smaller in those classes that are bulging? So I would imply, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, but I think it, it might make some hard decisions next year in moving some staff around, but to think outside the box, you've got what you've got, but you now have these numbers, how do you deal with them creatively? And keep those class sizes down, because the great work that everyone's doing at Heinsberg can't continue if you've got 28 kids in a classroom, no matter how many paras you throw in there and what you do. You need time for teachers, those highly qualified teachers, to connect with those kids. And it's really sad to me, when I've gone to parent conferences last week, and I hear teachers in that fifth grade going, I don't know how I can handle that class size coming in, and they're nervous. And I feel bad, I, I'm a teacher myself, I would not want to have a class size that come in. It was already disconcerting to me to have a class size in second grade this year. And my daughter, the year before, in fourth grade was in the bigger class, and it's in that fifth grade group this year that's, I would say, a little big for the needs there. So I would implore you guys to think outside the box. What can you do with what you've got? How can you create more classes using what you've got in place?
Hi, my name is Sandy Dury, and I second Scott's comments, and thank you also, I'm not sure I've caught your name, but I also have a son who will be, a child who'll be entering kindergarten next year, and I wanted to just really quickly share a story with you. When I was looking for a preschool for my two oldest children, this past year, I did a lot of canvassing, calling around, asking all critical questions, the questions I thought that were critical. One of the things that was important to me was class size for, for a student entering kindergarten, or be school. I spoke to a teacher here at Heinsberg Community School, that I, I don't even remember the person's name, and I was asking that question, and the teacher's response was, the class size was much too large, she couldn't handle it. This was, I think, pre-K, preschool or, or kindergarten. And that she actually directed me, she said, if I had the means to go elsewhere, to pay to go elsewhere. And I think that speaks highly of the situation that we're in today. And when she was talking about her class size, she was talking about in the 20s. So it's important, because I think a lot of children don't have the, the experience of pre-K coming into kindergarten, this is their first experience. We're lucky we're able to pay for private preschool. My children go to Hartworks right now in Williston, the ratio's 1 to 10, of course, so we're paying for that. So I wanted to share that story with you, and I also wanted to say that I was really disturbed by the video of the discussion that took place at the last meeting. As a community member and a parent, to me, and I wasn't privy to all the conversations, to me the focus was on how the community was going to beat up this panel around this issue. It wasn't about, let's find the best benchmark for the number of, number of teachers per the number of students that we have. It wasn't, what are other schools doing? It wasn't, you know, how should we, how can we talk to the community to make this decision on behalf of our students, a very important decision? It was more, how are we going to shield this discussion, we're talking about this with the community? So I would please ask this board to consider looking at benchmarks, to consider looking at some of the information, like the policy that Scott referenced here, which references that, you know, class sizes should be fewer than the average of 20 students per teacher. Think about the kids, think about how you could talk about this with the community, and not necessarily go directly to the conversation of the community is going to be up in arms for, over this issue, over $70,000 issue. The other thing I wanted to bring up, and it's tangentially related, and it's outside of probably the control of this group, but as a community member, I get worked up about this, and then I'll, I'll yield the floor to someone else because I'm taking up too much time. But we spent, as a town, around $30,000 of our tax money this year to, to groups, these are nonprofit groups, that could have been spent for a teacher at this school. Now, for me, as an individual, I feel like I shouldn't be taxed and have that $30,000 go to a nonprofit organization, that should be going to your, your teachers. I, as an individual, give to nonprofit organizations, and I definitely did vote against this. You know, I should be, we should all be upset about this, because this is the money that we should be choosing to spend, not the town, on, on passing money to nonprofit organizations. That's half of a teacher's salary. So just in summary, I'm very exercised, so I'm sorry that it is kind of all over the place, but I would really like for you guys to think about developing a policy around class size, because this conversation should be taking place every year. It should be pretty easy, it should be, okay, class sizes for pre-K are within this range. And that's based on best practices, and maybe it's a benchmark relative to other schools in your community, or it's relative to other best-practicing schools in the state, or it's relative to other best-practicing schools nationally. Thank you. And I appreciate your time, I know that this is all voluntary, so I don't want my remarks to, to take away from that at all. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Jessica Redman, I also have a son who's going to be starting this fall. I actually am, I'm actually surprised to hear that the recommended size for kindergarten is 20.
Less.
Or, well, no more, I still find that a little scary, given that many, like the kids who are coming in are coming from a place where there's 10 or 12, or in the case of my son, who's with an in-home provider, he's been one of six for the past three years. And I'm very concerned about even him entering a class that might be 15, because it might be just very overwhelming for him. So I also echo what she said I was going to say, which is, you already have passed your budget, and I'm sure you could be very creative with finding qualified people to pick up where things need to be picked up, and, yeah, I would just like to say that I also appreciate the work that you guys do, because I know this is voluntary, but I'm even hoping for smaller than 20 with what you have for resources.
So I'm Ally Douglas, and I seem to be one of the bubble makers in both segments.
You and Bill Baker.
So we do have the decision of 70 odd parents, who, most of which can't be here tonight, so I just wanted to pass that to you guys. And also, you know, not only share, I guess, the joint concern, but also offer, speaking slightly out of turn, but we have a really nice engaged parent group, and I feel like many people on that list are part of the group, but as, you know, Secretary of Pi, I bet if there were some outside discussions, thinking outside the box and problem solving, there are some pretty dedicated parents that would be happy to be part of that group, so to offer that as well.
Thank you.
I have a two and a half year old, and I want to, my name's Christina Lamb, sorry. And my husband and I chose to move here when I got pregnant. We had been living literally all over the world, and we chose to move to Heinsberg, specifically because I said, if I'm having a child, I want him to grow up, or her, I knew it was him, in this environment. I want him to have the small class sizes, I want him to have the sense of community that Vermont supports. I went to elementary in Williston, I didn't want him to grow up in a Willistonite place with Allenbrook, the insecticide factory-looking building, I wanted him someplace where he felt like he was a member of something, where he knew the people in his class, and where it wasn't scary or overwhelming. I didn't want to send him to private school for K3, it was important to me that he get to meet people of all different social backgrounds, economic backgrounds, everything. And I know you guys have a really, really hard job to do. I grew up with a parent on a school board, but I beg you to, like, talk to the teachers, they're some of our best resources. I was on Facebook today, and I said, you know, would you rather have a smaller class size or more money? And all of my friends who are teachers all over the world, literally, all said, we'd rather have smaller class sizes, it's easier for the students and it's easier for us. And I know, I mean, you come down to negotiations with the union, and it doesn't work that way, I'm fully aware of that, I do not hide my head in the sand, but, you know, maybe some of these teachers just have some brilliant ideas, and I just ask you to talk to them. They are the ones that have to teach, and they may have some creative, outside-the-box ideas... They are the ones that have to teach and they may have some creative, outside the box idea of how they can make this work. Because, you know, even, yeah, twenty would be nice. Any higher than twenty, I'm back to looking at private schools and then I might as well just move and not let my son explore this. I just, I know you have a hard job and I don't envy you. But we can stand up to the union when we have to. And I think most of the parents here would rather stand up to the union and have smaller class sizes. Even if it's challenging and I know the backlash comes back on you, so I'm sorry, but...
I'm concerned about fifth grade next year because right now there's just two fifth grade classrooms. And my daughter's in fourth grade with three classrooms. So I'm concerned that they're going to be smushed into two class sizes, two classrooms. I'm also concerned about kindergarten because I also have a son going into kindergarten. And I have a son in second grade too, so I'm definitely anticipating that. But I'm concerned about class size just for all three of my kiddos. You know, potentially, they're all going to be in big classes. And it's really worrisome. So I hope there can be a good solution in the fall. And it'd be nice to have some kind of practice in place, like what everyone's saying. It seems like every spring, I'm always like, "Oh, what's going to happen now?" Because my son started in four, and when he was in kindergarten, there was four kindergarten groups. First grade, there was four classes. And then when he got to second grade, it was condensed to three classrooms. And I feel like they're really impacted and I think the teachers are impacted as well. And just my second grade teacher said yesterday, "I cannot turn my back on these kids." They're at an assembly and there are being, you know, seventy-five percent of the kids are boys. And she said, "I can't keep my eyes off them for a minute." And if, you know, if the class size was a little bit smaller, then it probably wouldn't be so hard for her. But to have twenty-four kids and seventeen of them being boys, it's just, it's kind of scary. So my concern is, sure, we'll get four kindergarten groups, four kindergarten teachers, and then first grade, we'll keep the parents happy and keep them in four. But then when they get to second grade, they're going to get smushed just like my son did.
So may I ask a question then? I mean, has any research been done in terms of what is considered the best in practice class size for kindergarten, first grade, second grade, in terms of results nationally or even in state?
There's really hardly any research on class size. Any research there is really points to the very earliest grades, kindergarten through second grade. Beyond that, there is no research that points to any benefit. Really, the research points to have the very best teacher. That said, you guys are bringing up lots of things that we ought to pay attention to, that I know people do pay attention to. You know, there's a matter of, like, how much space is there for all of the human beings that are in that class and room to move around and the kinds of activities that teachers can do if they've got twenty kids in a class or thirty kids in a class. But there is no good research. There is a little bit of research on the very early grades and even that is thin.
And presumably, the research is directed at the younger children because it's more, I mean, we're talking about five and six year olds. Can you imagine as parents trying to manage twenty plus, five or six year olds and get them to learn in an environment? I'm not a teacher. I just have my three children and I try to get them to learn in an environment of three children. And I can't even imagine what a teacher would go through with twenty plus students in a class. I mean, is it possible?
Well, I will say that just looking around the SU, Shelburne, Williston and Charlotte, the numbers are not different there when you talk about twenty. When you start talking about twenty-three, that's, that's a number that causes everybody to pounce. But at twenty, I think that you're no different than Williston, Shelburne or Charlotte.
But we're over that threshold right now.
Exactly. You are over that threshold. And I think that any time, any time you go over twenty and you're talking about kindergarten for second grade, I think everybody kind of goes, hmm, you know, and kindergarten, the very first entry to school.
Right, very important.
I'm Kristin Iskavaj and I have a current first grader and an incoming kindergartner. So I'm here to hear the discussion about the teacher-student ratios and support following whatever benchmarks we can find. I had heard fifteen to eighteen was our optimal size. But, so that's, I echo the sentiments on that topic. But I also had another topic that I emailed the board about. And I don't know when it will come up, but I do have to go, if it'll come up this time or some other time. But it's, let's say we decide we are going to have a teacher or they find the money somewhere to have another kindergarten teacher this year. I'm, I asked a question about, I don't know what the hiring process is. Is there, is it always posted on School Spring? Is it, I know that there's sometimes consideration of people that are already in the building. And I emailed it, the question, because I feel like I'm not clear on the process and I'd love to know more about where I can go to see the process and be sure that we're always looking to the biggest pool of our talented teachers. Because I feel like we have the luxury of being in one of the districts that pays our teachers better. So I would hope we can really get the highest caliber teachers. And that may or may not be somebody with experience in the building. And I know that's always a balancing act. You know someone, you like them personally, but are they the best teacher? Because we all know that once we have them, they're here with us for a very long time. And, and want to make sure that that level of scrutiny happens at that first instance.
Do we want to respond to that now or maybe suggest that Kristin talk to one of you outside of the meeting context?
I could send you, Kristin, the guidelines that I've developed and shared with all of the administrators on hiring process, processes that we will use across the whole SU that speak exactly to that.
Will use or have used in the past year?
Will across the SU use the same processes? But I would say that even in the past, we've always posted all of our openings on School Spring. True?
Well, no.
No, okay.
Not true.
I'm worried that they're not.
They're not, they're not always. First, I think everybody just needs to know there is a recall situation in Heinsberg currently. So even if an opening comes up, there is a teacher, we have to recall first. So that would not get posted. So just to put that out there.
Right.
If every teacher who's here today...
Just because I know, yeah, just because I know it came up, it's not a, it's not a substitute teacher. It is a full...
It's a contracted permanent teacher.
Thank you.
So assuming everybody who works for us today has the contractual right to a job next year and we now have a true open position, when it's a position, ninety percent of the time, it's going to be posted on School Spring. It's going to be posted internally across all the SU schools.
When is the exception?
The exceptions?
That answers my question, so I'm glad to hear that going forward. But I know of the two...
Yep, let me speak to those because I think I can guess which one you're thinking of. There, some schools choose, we have two instances when we can do one-year contracts. Either because somebody's taken a leave of absence or because somebody was hired after August first. So sometimes principals do choose to post internally only because they had the person in the building for a year as a one-year person and the person's not coming back from a leave of absence or they've been in successive one-year contracts. Like, we have people who've worked on four one-year contracts. So they're not only a known entity, they're a known entity. However, the new procedures or updated procedures that Elaine's talking about that rolled out this spring are discouraging that, that we always post internally and externally for all positions and that we are required by contract to consider all internal candidates, but that doesn't mean they get the job. So there's other parts of content that play into it as well. But I think you'll see going forward, ninety-nine percent of positions will be posted internally and externally.
For both classroom and...
For any teaching position.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
So you all understand the issue. You want to solve this problem, the ratio of kindergarten groups and the older groups. How can we, as a community, be helpful to you? What can we do to support the hard position of your...
That's a great question. Well, you know, I don't want to cut off participation if anyone else wants to go, but I didn't see people clamoring. So I think you heard Mr. Goodrow speak about process and I think that's the process that, I mean, we'll, we'll talk about it as a board, but I think that's the process that we will most likely follow. And that is for the administration to consider this issue and come back to us at our meeting next month to have a discussion and possibly an action item on whether we need to do any hiring. So I don't know that there's much we can do in interim. As I said earlier, I'm glad you're here because this is the community's opportunity to let us hear what is of concern to the community. So we have that knowledge, both directly here and through that petition that you submitted. So we are very cognizant of the concern of the community and aware of these issues and the concerns the community has for them. So, you know, I, you know, I think all of us will consider this issue as deeply as we can and we'll do the best we can in figuring out how to respond to the discussion that we'll have next month. And I think you appreciate the situation we're in where we're, I don't want to say we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, but we're in a difficult position in that we have a budget that was fortunately passed last month and it is what it is. We can't get more money. We have to work within the confines of that budget and we will have to come up with a constructive solution to meet our community's needs within that budgeted package. And we'll do the best we can and we would just ask for the community's support in whatever we do.
Do you want creative solution recommendations if we have ideas? Is there a way to express those then in public meeting, the next month's public meeting? Or is this the opportunity tonight or...
If you've got any bright ideas. If you've got any bright ideas, I want to hear them tonight.
What happens if you're over budget? What, I mean, I'm all, in my professional life, I work with budgets. But what happens in this situation if you decide to hire another teacher and you're over budget by, what, seventy thousand dollars?
You really are intended to find it within your budget. The only area that a board is allowed to over expend by choice is in special education. And that's because there's a law that says you need to provide a free and appropriate public education. And the board can't always see coming what needs an individual student might have. In this case, they would need to figure out, okay, how within the budget do we do this?
Okay. And is the budget, obviously, is published on the web somewhere or...
Yes.
So we as individuals, as community members, could go through the budget and say, "Why not not have a dinner, an orientation dinner next week? Let's just take that money and put it towards teacher or let's not do this, this and this." Can, I mean, is that what you're looking for, a proposal from the community in terms of pulling together seventy thousand dollars from the budget somehow?
That's a lot of dinners.
It is, but, you know, personally, I've managed departments in my profession and I know that there's a lot of areas where you can go through and look, okay, do we really, really need this? I mean, you have to ask yourselves, I asked the board also to think about this. Do you really, really need a teacher if you're in the twenty-fives to thirty kids per class? Or do you need an orientation dinner or something else in the budget? Can we go through and scrape?
So I'm, sorry Keith.
No, go ahead.
I've been a building level principal for thirty-nine years. The last four years here in Heinsberg have been the most challenging budget years in that thirty-nine year span. I just want you to know, there is no place to scrape. Anything that could be scraped has been taken. And I'm not, I'm not saying that to you in order to tell you that we can't be creative in some way. It's just that the journey that our community has been on for the last four years has really tightened the budget. And we've worked really hard, as you can well imagine, in a school budget, eighty-five percent of your dollars are personnel related. So you've got about fifteen percent of an eight and a half million dollar budget that you work with. And when you think about transportation, energy costs, those fixed costs that you have when you run a program, I just want you to know, there's not going to be any easy, oh, we just won't do this or... The reason why I didn't want to have that conversation tonight is because I don't know where we're going to... We'll turn every stone over that we can turn over in terms of looking at it. But it's a collective journey that we've been on that has brought us to this place. And for us to bring a ten-plus percent budget increase year to year to taxpayers last month, that was probably, that was probably the most challenging decision that I've been involved in for a school board to have to bring to the community. And I think it's a testament to the fact that the journey we've been on for the last four years has really forced us to take anything and everything that we could out. So I don't want to be defensive, but I just want to remind those of you who perhaps are experiencing Heinsberg as a parent for the first time, this has been a different journey than anything I've ever been a part of in my thirty-nine years as a building administrator. So, but I can tell you this about the board and the community. I have felt since I arrived here six years ago that the commitment that the community has to its children and to its school is incredible. And it's a pleasure for me to, to serve this community and we're going to do everything we can to do the best thing by the kids at the end of the day. Just know that. But I want you to understand that it isn't just go in and rearrange something because we've, we've done all the rearranging we could possibly do to get us to this point. And this is a wonderful challenge for us to have as a community is to have people such as yourselves say to us, "We came to Heinsberg because we wanted to be a part of the community you've built." So we're not in any way looking to minimize that in any, any shape or form. So just know that we're going to do our darndest to make it work for kids at the end of the day.
Lisa, did you have something?
Keep on going.
Okay. Jim, go ahead.
Is it, is it truly a seventy thousand dollar shortfall or is it something less than that because there are ten extra students coming and part of funding is due to the population coming in?
Well, I think it's, if I can answer, I think it's preliminary to even think about what kind of dollar figure we're talking about here. I mean, we, we're not necessarily talking about hiring a new teacher. I think you've heard some of the parameters we have on that. And I've also heard from several community members that we should think about other ways to solve this problem than hiring a new teacher. So I don't know if we're necessarily prepared to answer that.
Okay, I can ask a question differently then. Is it true that the budget is the budget? Is it no, because some of the funding comes from the state?
Based on population?
I do want to take a cut at this because, here's the thing. We do get per pupil, but it's looking out the back door. So the money that we get this year is based on the two-year average of two years back. So the seventeen additional students you're going to have, next year, you could imagine that you'll get half of that money from the state. And in the following year, in the two years looking back, you have the full seventeen students. So it is good to have additional students, but you don't get the money on day one.
As I've said before to several people, this is a good problem to have and I'll keep saying that. But, but what the state funding situation sets up is it tempers the problem on the backside so that you don't have drastic teacher cuts when your population is going down. It does nothing to help you on the upside, which is what we're facing right now.
Which is unique in Vermont.
Which is fairly unique in Vermont.
Well, I, I want to respond to the question about what can you do? I mean, because it would be awful to leave the meeting feeling like, gee, I, you know, what am I gonna do? I can't do anything. And I think that there are a number of things that you can do. One of them is showing up at, at meetings. Whenever there's a school board meeting, there should be some kind of representation from those who are concerned about this, and maybe it's Pi representation or, or whatever. But attending meetings is incredibly helpful, just for sharing communication and so forth. Another piece is, you know, if Pi is the organization in the school that's really active, if you're not part of it, become part of it and make that a viable, um, organization. I mean, we used to have an incredible PTO a number of years ago, and it withered and went away, and Bob was incredibly helpful with resuscitating a parent-teacher organization. And that brings so much vitality into the school. You know, another piece is paying attention to what's happening in Montpelier. And you can go online and look at the website and see what kind of legislation is being talked about at the moment. And, for example, one of the things that we talked about at our supervisory union board meeting was a proposal, and it, it's still in proposal stage, to have votes for the supervisory union budget happen at a broader level than what we currently do. And it may not seem relevant to you now, but if that happens, that will have a huge impact on all of our budgets in the supervisory union. So, you know, take a look at, at some of the proposed legislation, and if you have questions, email Keith as, as our chair, and he can direct, you know, who could answer those questions most effectively. But, you know, those, those are three things that I can think of immediately that you can do, is one, just show up, you know, that's half of it. Two, the Pi, and pay attention to what's happening in Montpelier, because the dollars that we get from Montpelier do make a difference in the school. And, and I'd also just like to say, I've been on the board for a long time, and I'm incredibly proud of where this school has come. And Diane, you know, we, we've come a long way in the past X number of years, and nobody wants to see that go away, because when people are moving to the community because of the school, that is incredible. You know, it used to be that people were moving in the other direction. So, we, we did something right, and nobody wants to lose it. But this is the most incredibly challenging budget time that I've seen. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
I'm not sure how many of the board members are aware. I've been very involved with the Pi group for the last few years, and so I'm gonna put on, because I don't have the restriction that you have to make a caveat, I'll make the representation for Pi people. The petition in front of you has seventy-three lines of names you may recognize, but what is not represented in that list of seventy-three people are the same concerns and thoughtful responses and considerations that have been presented to you tonight. So, pretend there's another, you know, four times as many people here that couldn't make this meeting. The other thing I would inquire of, and just speak for the benefit of all in the room, if I'm to understand correctly that there may be an action decision at the next meeting, I also understand that you are faced with a decision to discuss Australian ballot at the next meeting. And those discussions have the potential for, perhaps some, some conflict, perhaps some disparaging, uh, disparaging perspectives. So, you know, it's, it's a luxury for some of us to be here, you know, at, at a, at a meeting, but it seems as though it may be a necessity for, you know, this conversation to be carried over the next meeting.
Well, in terms of the Australian ballot, we're gonna talk about that now that we have to add it to the agenda. I, I, we have to talk about when we're gonna schedule it. I can't say that it will necessarily be at a regularly scheduled school board meeting. We might call a special meeting of the, of the district to conduct that.
Thank you for clarifying.
I guess I, again, don't want to be in your shoes. You guys have big decisions, but I think...
There's an election every March.
I know. I think a big part of, some of the angst in the community is communication, and we keep hearing one teacher, one teacher for kindergarten. That's not the only huge class. Right now, you've got, you're looking at twenty-seven kids in a fifth grade class, and that doesn't feel good. And one teacher's not gonna cover kindergarten and fifth grade or account for that second grade bubble. I mean, there's a bigger issue at stake than just a one teacher and seventy thousand dollars. So, I, I know you guys have a big decision to try and figure out, how do you rework that? But I would implore you to think about having a stronger statement than just adopting state regs, that somewhere down the line, next year, a committee or something. Other schools have adopted a lot, more stringent rules or policies in place that aren't just tied to the state. They've actually formed it to fit their community, and it's been a community-supported piece of, here is what we envision for our town, for what our classrooms and sizes need to be. And so, as a parent, you feel really comfortable. You're not still sitting here at the end of April, still not sure if your kid's gonna be in the twenty-seven kids or eighteen kids, and feeling that angst that even when you go to a parent conference, they can't tell you an answer. And they're telling you, I think you're gonna be in a big class where you might not be. We don't know what the options are for next year. I think that's the bigger piece, that communication with the community, and having a, a policy in place that can alleviate the fears that parents feel and the angst of what size room is my kid gonna be in next year, you know? And that is a terrible feeling to be in, in that class where we went rumors for six months and then found out, yep, you're in a bigger class. So, I, I would say you've got a short-term fix, but it looks like there's a bigger picture that needs to be looked at. And that's more of, what do we want our community, school to look like beyond state regs? Like, what do we see for our vision?
I would second that. I think she's more eloquent in how she put that than the way I was trying to go there earlier. But you can point to the policy in terms of building the budget, instead of the other way around, getting set in a budget and then thinking, ooh, maybe we should've had a policy, and then using that policy when you're talking to the community. This is best in class. So, we want it, we want our budget to match the policy or the vision, and not the other way around, not retrofitting.
All, all of our policies are online, so you can...
But I'm talking about, you know, something like, this is an example from the Vermont Department of Education.
School quality standards.
This, right, it has class size recommendations, et cetera.
We've adopted a lot of policy that is on the website. What's missing is the procedural piece that you're referencing.
Right.
We did adopt those guidelines. So, the mid-optimal minimals, you've been talking about the fifteen minimum, fifteen to twenty, fifteen to twenty-two by grade level.
Fourteen to eighteen per K.
That is the issue. That is the issue's optimal class size guideline.
Fourteen to eighteen per K.
And the qualifier is the word optimal.
Optimal, exactly.
I guess that's my question, then. So, it's okay to go outside the guideline? I mean, we could have a twenty-three person kindergarten class? I guess that's a possibility.
Remind them that we're...
I know you guys are saying you don't want to do that, but that could happen next fall, and I wouldn't find out until September.
Then why would the budget be built around...
Now, we don't get schools like Warren. There's other districts that have taken those state regs to a new level, and they have said, we're following the alt-optimum. We're not going above, even if it means a little pain for the following year. We're letting the community know, we're not going above eighteen. We're not going, they, they're, there's a, and, and there's winged room. You, you got nineteen in one room. You're not gonna hire another teacher for that one extra kid that moved in. But there, other schools have, school boards have adopted policies that are a little stronger, I guess, or a little more fitting of the town than just the state guidelines, which are pretty broad. You know, you can number your numbers pretty easily and say, I've got sixteen in kindergarten, but I've got twenty-three in second, but if I average them together, I'm in the guidelines. So, there's, there's ways to make it a little bit stronger.
I feel like I need to say this, because I, I think we're going down a road where you're not understanding what we do. And I'm looking around the room to see if there are any budget buddies here, and there's one past one sitting in the back. So, she knows this, and Bill was a budget buddy for several years before he was on the board. We talk about all these things during the budget process. We consider all these things during the budget process. We look at whatever data we have available to us on class sizes, among other things, during the budget process. I can't recall specifically that we talked about the fifth grade class, but we did talk about the sizes of all the classes in school. The kindergarten is always a variable, because they're new students. So, no one knows what the full number is until certainly they show up in August. We have a pretty good idea when we do registration in the spring, but that was a bit of a variable. You heard Mr. Goodrow speak earlier that when the current second graders were incoming kindergarteners, that was the year where we looked at the predictors that we have, that Heinsberg Community School has used historically, didn't work. And so, we've taken steps to look at different ways to predict the size of those kindergarten classes. And the numbers throughout the course of the winter and spring were creeping up in the high fifties and low sixties, and just last, whenever kindergarten registration was, last week or the week before, it got to sixty-eight. So, these are all things we consider and are cognizant of during the budget process as much as we can, because if you participate in our budget process, you will know that there are a lot of moving pieces during the entire process. And we take the information that we have available to us and build a budget based on those policies and concepts.
There was a question about whether there were two action items at next month's meeting, special, and voting on this. But we're not...
Well, I don't know, I don't know what action items are gonna be on the agenda for next month. We're gonna talk in a few minutes about what to do about the special meeting for the Australian ballot. So, you're more than welcome to stick around for that. And then if, in terms of the agendas, the agendas are posted online. So, if you do want to see what is on the agenda for the next meeting, which will be the second Wednesday of May, which is...
Nine?
May eighth. May eighth. Seven PM. Seven PM, right here, will be the next school board meeting, regular school board meeting.
And the...
And the agenda will probably be available approximately a week before then, around May first, on the CSSU website, which you could probably also access from the HCS website. Thank you.
Ken, you have a question?
Ken, yes.
Do you mediate any of this by doubling the fee for after-hours at the school?
I trample it. That's a creative idea.
It's all connected, isn't it?
Someone put on purse.
All right. Five point two CSSU G-brief. Yeah, Lisa. Do we want to have a conversation?
I do. No, I don't care if, I mean, I, I don't know if they want to hear...
I think it's important for the administration to hear us.
Yeah, I think that this is...
Could you guys, I'm, I'm sorry, we got a lot of stuff to do. If you want to, please go outside.
Lisa.
No, I, I just feel like we probably should've had a follow-up conversation before everybody left to understand the process for resolving this issue. If we are talking about having an action item next board meeting is what my understanding is, does there need to be, does our administration need some help from us? Should there be some kind of subgroup looking at this? Or is there, what, what will be the procedure? We're just handing it back to the administration and waiting until May eighth to look at what our opportunities are for resolving this issue?
I, I have a question even whether we take action on this.
Or whether it's just an administrative piece.
Or whether this is an administrative decision that elicits the community, our discussion on.
I mean, so, so my thoughts, Bob.
So...
I was looking up the Warren tax rate, actually, because it occurs to me that, like, when people say, and maybe it was somebody even here who said it, people pay for what they get. You guys could put in your budgets five teachers next year, and you, the taxpayers, will pay for it. And one of the very frustrating things about how education funding works in Vermont is that the people in Warren could vote for, you know, big school budgets, and depending on what their personal situation is, it might not be them that's paying for it. It could be us. It could be anybody else, because it all goes to one place, and then you just get back what you asked for. And then the tax rate that depends on how much money you earn and what kind of house you live in. So, that's why I was kinda looking, because I'm, I'm just curious myself now. What do they pay for tax rate compared to Heinsberg? Because that's part of the conversation, too.
So, right now, it's a process question about where we're at with moving forward.
So, so my thoughts, Bob. I know that we've done, um, multi-age grades in the past to alleviate some of the pressure of having one class with a large number and another class that may be smaller. Is that an option for us to look at that to help alleviate, whether, it may not be in the kindergarten, maybe we do need to put in a full-time straight another teacher there, but if we shifted, is that an option? Or have you been thinking about? Those are the kind of things that I'm thinking about.
I haven't done a whole lot of thinking about it, basically because the information's too new, and I really wanted to get a head nod, uh, one way or another, from you folks, rather than wasting a lot of time trying to create possible scenarios and then discovering that, you know, you're not interested. I think what I would do is probably utilize the program council at school and do some brainstorming around what might happen. You just, um... You just saw this evening, achievement results on our kids. Our delivery model as it currently exists, we moved away from multi-age classrooms because of the work that we're doing around curriculum and the timeframes that we need in order for teachers to deliver a quality literacy and math program. So, I don't think a multi-age scenario, it might solve class size problems, but it's gonna create instructional delivery problems. I have thought about, quite a bit, about the delivery model. And, you know, it's one thing to talk about classroom teachers, but there are a number of other educators that work in our school as well. Tier-two service providers, tier-three service providers, maybe there's a conversation that we can have around the utilization of that staff. We have moved to literacy and math blocks within, within our school day, whereby we're utilizing those folks. So, I wouldn't want the conversation to get bogged down strictly around the independent classroom teacher and not look at the other staff that we employ in the school as well. So, I'm thinking that what we might do is get some thoughts out and begin to circulate those. And I'm not even sure that, I mean, when you talk about, what'd you tell me the next meeting is?
May eighth.
May eighth.
I mean, that's basically three weeks to turn something around. So, it's not gonna be a lot of time. So, I'm not sure that even on May eighth, I'm gonna be able to...
And I just want to...
Pull a trigger.
I'm gonna jump in, because I have to go next door. They're waiting for me for an executive session. But I do think that the next process piece is for the admin, you guys to charge the administration with looking at the entire budget.
Right.
And think about what's the best way, because it's not going to be like shaving off a little bit here, a little bit there.
No.
It's gonna be some creative thinking, and really, they're the best people to do that. They understand how everything functions within this school.
So, I just wanted to remind the board that we are also losing a title position. So, in terms of thinking creatively with the staff that we have, as far as moving people around, we are losing, you know, what is it, 0.7 of, 1.0 of a title position, so.
Because of cut in federal.
So, there's that to.
This, I'm confused, what is it? I'm, I'm, I'm losing this, I don't.
The essential skills program that you have.
Right.
The pre, or the K-2 programs referred to as title.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
The title, because of sequestration and reduction.
Oh, so this is a new, a new thing that we're losing, that you're just telling us right now?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know that, okay.
So, so that poses its own separate challenge. But then, you know, all the research in the world says that in order to get kids where they need to be, the, the primary ages is where to put the resources. So, larger class size is losing a title position in that age range. It's, to think that, no, I, I'm not going to say that. Bob and I have been looking at creative ways to help the board out.
Yeah, I would also point out, not to throw another weight on your chest, but we have a facilities crunch, too. I mean, we don't have another class, we have, we don't have another classroom to put another class in.
So, can I, so can I just throw something out that may be completely wacky? But I think they do it at, at Charlotte. They do have a half-day kindergarten option. So, if we had two half-day kindergarten options as a third class, you know, so, so, I don't know. I'm just, it's, go.
It's only half, it's only, it's only half time until January, and then January, it's a full day.
Full day.
It, it, that is an option, the board should go back to half-day programs. But I don't, I think after what you heard tonight, you probably don't want to go there. But that would be an option, to go do four half-days, do two teachers.
All right, Colleen.
No, I.
No, 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 I'm just, no, no, not, not on that point.
Oh, thank you.
Closing this discussion.
No, I was. No, I was just happy to hear that anything, there wouldn't be action taking without fair discussion and warning. So, I'm happy to have that clarified.
Lisa.
What are you asking?
Any final thoughts?
No, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we are moving forward to come to a satisfactory conclusion for the folks who are affected by it. I did want to say that I can't remember, I think her name was Sandy. She commented on our last board meeting, and I wanted to be clear, because I think we all feel this way, that we were discuss, I think what she was referring to is when we were discussing the board meeting, the town meeting, where we had a divided vote essentially passing our budget. It wasn't 50-50, but it was definitely a divided vote. For me, that was a very big signal that the community had spoken that this was about all they could do for a budget for this year. So, I completely support figuring out this problem. But I do not support it by looking at increasing our budget right after that vote. So, I just want to be clear about that from my perspective. I'm not speaking for the whole board, but I think that's the discussion we were having. It was not, it has nothing to do with trying to save my back. It has everything to do with trying to recognize the community process we had just been through and what came out of that community process. So, I did want to make sure that we were clear on that, or I was clear on that from my perspective.
You had your chance.
I got to retract my, okay, good, good.
You know, just allow me to think outside the box. I don't know if this is a good idea, but, you know, an option of a half-day kindergarten. And I was a parent who, we didn't have a full-day kindergarten when my son was in kindergarten. And I had to, I couldn't deal with it as a working parent. But that, you could, I could almost envision a, a rotation through where, where, you know, a fourth, or, each, each kindergartner would get full-day kindergarten, but they wouldn't get it the whole year. And it would be a rotation through a half-day segment, just because of how challenging this is. I mean, I don't know how you're going to do it, but you've amazed me before. But I look at this and I think, I don't know how you're going to do it. So, just an idea that probably would be quite a headache.
Do I get to that?
No, you get to.
So.
I, I don't know if, can I just say, I don't know if this is the place now for us to start chewing on ideas at this hour, without having administration do the hard work of coming to us with their best thinking. I'm concerned that we throw stuff out there without, you know, it's hard to put stuff out there and then not respond to it and have, I would hate for people to think that these are potential options before the administration comes to us with their thinking on it.
I, my understanding is that Elaine suggested that if we have some suggestions for, to, as representatives of the community, to give the administration some feedback on what we're thinking, that doesn't necessarily mean that's going to carry the day, because this is within the purview of the administration to consider and either make a recommendation that we validate, or I'm still not certain whether we really have any control over this as an action item, and rather, this is them telling us this is how we're going to administrate the school, but we've heard you and taken your considerations, your, your concerns into consideration.
But leave it, leave it at the level of brainstorming.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's a really valuable idea.
And, and if that, if that wasn't clear, it's now clear that that is what this segment is.
We're brainstorming.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, quickly, just Bob, based upon who showed up today, I just thought afterward that, you know, as you're going through this process, I think we need to keep the folks informed in as many ways as possible as, you know, what we're thinking, the results, I don't know if there's a, but, you know, we often hear oftentimes, you know, what's the decision on that? You know, so, just keep that in mind. I know you'll do it, but let's just be extra diligent about keeping the folks informed about where we are in the process and what we're thinking. Is there?
It's in the minutes.
I understand.
Well, I, I think it's, it's not just in the minutes of a periodic meeting. I think that, you know, it's hard to convey interim thinking or interim decisions.
Right.
So, I think there's a balancing act of keeping people informed about what's, what the thought process is versus what the decision is ultimately. And, you know, I think we can assist in that in some regard, so that if, if you could keep us more informed, so that when we do, by tomatoes, set lampens, and someone pulls us aside and says, what's going on? We can, you know, at least report what knowledge we have. Obviously, not speaking on behalf of the board. But whether it's your coffee talks that you've had before or continuing communication in the Viking, you know, I think, I think those are right. I think communication is, more is better. Okay. Do you have some feedback from us that you need? And, and the community as well?
I mean, I'm, like I told the gentleman that said he had a good idea. I mean, I, if I, if, I'll take anything. And I mean, in Kathy's, Kathy's suggestion of consideration of, of half-days, I mean, we can certainly take that. Take, take that and put it as, as part of the mix. We'll also take a look at the budget. As you know, we've been working hard to erase a deficit that we went into this year with. And we have a financial meeting next week. And I'm anxious to see where we are in terms of that journey. Because the goal was to eliminate as much of that deficit before we got to the end of the current year, so that we wouldn't have that challenge on top of, of our increase for next year to deal with. Because that's going to put us behind the eight ball when we get to next September and we start struggling with the 14, 15 budget. So, I think maybe there'll be some good news there that will help us with addressing this challenge. I'd like to think that that might be the case, but I certainly don't know that.
I, I would like to, I feel like the only one that I have a real clear direction from is Lisa. And, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure where the other four board members stand on, on the discussion. If, if the next step of the process is for Bob and I to sit down and to talk, I mean, we need to know what our options are. If our options are limited, I would like to know that.
But you can't go past the budget, so, right? I mean, are you asking, we can't create any more budget? So, right? Isn't that why?
You can't create any more budget, but obviously, you run deficits before. What I don't know is what their parameters are around that when you haven't even started the fiscal year yet.
Although, I thought Elaine was pretty clear about that.
I think we've been in the position before where we've had to add teachers after.
People deficits.
Oh, we certainly have.
Not, not, not when we've had a fund balance that's in the shape it's in now. I, I'd like, I would actually rather get direction back from, because that, what Elaine said tonight, I went, ooh. I thought maybe there was a little wiggle room there, and she was very clear. So, maybe you can give direction back to us. If that's the case, it seems like the, it really changes the, what's available. I mean, because our, I don't feel like our fund balance is in the kind of shape we can plan a deficit, right? Or maybe, I don't know, maybe Bob Mason will say, no, you're okay, or I, I don't know. I, I feel like we're kind of in uncharted waters.
Yeah.
Next month, you'll also get your third quarter FMR, so we should have.
Right. That would help, too.
I mean, if you're looking for feedback of, of where we stand, what I would really welcome is having, these are, these are your options. You can do this, this, or this. What do you want to do? And if we don't like any of them, then there's your fourth option. And it could be, you know, status quo, we do nothing. And on the other extreme is we go and hire someone full-time and they're on the payroll, whatever. But in between that, there are probably a few different options. My prediction would be the board would not support going above our budget. But I don't know. If we saw the other options that are there and we just said, no, that's not palatable, we really can't do that, then you might convince us otherwise. But I don't think status quo is an option either. But, you know, that's one of our options, is do nothing. The other option is just go ahead and hire three people. So, I, I personally would welcome your best thinking on it and come back to us as, this is what's before you, these are your options.
I appreciate that frame, that helps me.
Yeah, well, I, I'm learning my new role and having some growing pains.
Welcome.
Learning my role as chair.
You're doing a great job.
I, oftentimes, a chair is supposed to remain neutral and let everyone else speak and only venture when there's a tie. But I, I'm going to go outside that and, you know, I don't know what the solution is, but the status quo is absolutely unacceptable to me as a board member. We have Kate or another Pi member as, if we're lucky, as the only person sitting in one of these chairs during our meetings. We had ballpark 30 people here tonight, plus 70-something represented in a petition that care about this issue enough to show up and, and collect those signatures. And that represents the community speaking to me, saying this class size is at those levels is absolutely unacceptable.
And, and we have a petition out there to call a special meeting because people don't like our 10% budget increase and want to have a move to Australian ballot. So, there are many stakeholders in this situation. But I think everybody cares about the school, everybody. But, yeah, there are a lot of stakeholders here.
So, I, I think it's fair for me to tell you that we'll come back to you with options and pros and cons of those options. I mean, I can't see any other way to present it to you than to present it to you in that way. And some of those pros and cons are going to involve what we think are the pros and cons for the kids involved in picking one option over another as well. Does that make sense?
As much as anything can right now, Bob.
The one, the one thought that keeps going through my head is the, the the continuous question at the budget meetings about when are we going to reach our breaking point?
Going through our, going through my head.
Can we move on and say to lose?
Yes, yes. Well, I'm hopeful that we can bust through most of the rest of the things except for the biggie, which is coming. So, 5.2 CSSU debrief, I think, is where we are right at the moment. Colleen, you want to give us a brief debrief? If need be.
I, it was a relatively uneventful meeting. We had a great presentation on kneecap, and we saw a lot of it for our local. But there was, we don't, we can move on.
Okay, thank you. 5.3 Parent Council. I read the minutes, I think, of the Pi meeting. And unfortunately, one of the board members was not there, if I recall. Kate, or Frank, or Jim, or Ally, do you want to add anything?
What's the point of this agenda?
Just to report the status of.
Sorry, try to fall.
To report the status of Pi's activities.
Pi is active.
Perfect.
Thank you, Colleen, for giving us a plug. I really appreciate that, although I'm a little nervous about some of this incoming energy.
Energy is good.
Oh, my, oh, boy, here we go.
It's, it's easier to harness the energy than to try to create energy, so, energy is good.
Okay, I'll, I'll believe you on that one. We have some really exciting fundraisers going on. We have some excited interest based on this kindergarten issue, which has brought new people into the conversation, which is an opportunity to talk to them about other things, which gets me excited. Pi's doing great. We're looking forward to wrapping up the year and planning next year.
Thank you.
Anything else we want to say? We're looking good.
And you were able to get some well-deserved grants.
Yes.
Then.
Yep.
That the teachers really appreciated.
We put a blurb in the Viking, and there'll be a little blurb in the Citizen, just acknowledging the, gave out $5,000 in grants to the teachers. Some of them are not teachers, sorry, to, to grantees, to the applicants.
There you go.
Nice.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the active role it has in our school. That, of course, being the community trying to give some Brady in a basis other than tax. 5.4 Facilities Committee.
We have no update at this time.
5.5 Technology Committee. I don't know that we have a member of the committee, which, by the way, is action items later. So, I don't think we have an update, Jeff, unless you have one.
Uh, not, not that needs to be shared.
Okay. 5.6 Principal Higher Update. Kathy, do you want to, you will be incented to make it short?
Search Committee met on Monday. The Search Committee is meeting on Thursday. I believe you have the calendar of our meetings. And I think that's about all I can tell you.
It's in process.
It's in process.
Thank you for doing that.
6.0 Discussion Matters. We nixed 6.1 and 6.2, so now we're at 6.3 Communications Board Corners. Does anybody want to say anything about that? Colleen had drafted something for me, which I submitted to
Front porch forum.
The Citizen and Front porch forum after the annual meeting, thanking the community. I also, I don't know if people saw, I also posted something about the kneecap presentation this evening. I'd like to think that's what elicited all turnout. But I, I will try to continue doing that when the spirit moves me. 6.4 CSSU Board Composition, CBU Representation. I will try to briefly present this for the non-CSSU Board Reps. I will try to briefly present this for the non-C S S U board reps. C S S U is comprised of a fixed number of board members from each of the constituent boards within the S U. Three per board. C V U, because it is a very large board and it escapes to what number it is?
Eleven.
Eleven, feels that it should, and because it represents a nine through twen, it's the only representatives of a nine through twelve grade level education, that it should have additional representation on the C S S U board. I think this is ultimately a C S S U board decision, but we wanted to bring it back to the local boards to sort of feel people out on what reaction they have to that. Hearing none, I, I guess we will report back to the C S S U board that there is indifference in Heinsburg.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had to text my daughter who thinks I'm picking her up right now. I think we should, we should support it.
Okay.
I mean, that's my impression as a C S S U board member. I feel really fine with them having more, more members. I think it's right for them to have more members given in times when we have, it, it feels very much like there's three against the rest of the K through twelves. And that's not really a fair assessment of it, but they represent all of our kids eventually, so I would support it. And if they want us to have a statement to that, that's how I feel about it.
Okay. Any, any objection or other response?
And just like to restate what the process is, and we need to look into that a little bit more, but there would be an action item at the next C S S U board to authorize a letter that would go to the State Board of Education, because it's gotta be a formal process, because we're changing a governance piece.
Which I think is written in statute, so it requires some type of exception to that.
Yeah.
So a formal process will have to be followed, it will not happen immediately.
But we wanted to fully vet it with all the local boards first. But all, I, for the most part, I, all C S S U board members support it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Six point five Cindy said we were gonna move seven point four here to approve the current school year calendar, I guess based on snow days. Can you give, help, give me some guidance there?
This is just a heads up to the board that so far there's been three snow days. If we add them on to the current calendar, that pushes the last student day to Monday.
For this year?
For this year. So the board, the administration may come to the board requesting that you waive one more student day. You only have a hundred and seventy-six, you have to have a hundred and seventy-five. They ask that you waive Monday so that Friday's the last student day instead of Monday and having to bring kids back. This is just so you know.
This, this is Monday, June seventeenth.
Correct. Staff would still work their number contracted days and just become a professional day.
Yeah.
But just put on your radar in case you have strong objections one way or the other, or strong support, so that Elaine knows what to recommend.
I strongly support it to waive the last, if, if it's a Monday, to waive that Monday. And we've done that before in that professional development time, it's just been incredibly valuable. And families move on with their lives.
And the reason we're not asking for a decision tonight is because stuff happens. There could be flooding, there could be, in which case the administration might change its position if you're now on Tuesday.
Could, could mean June fourteenth is now the last day of school?
Possibly.
It's gonna, it's gonna be.
We all wanna know that.
Possibly. I believe eighth grade graduation is scheduled for the thirteenth, pretty much regardless of what ends up happening. But I think it may move to Thursday last, the pack meeting, but, um, that's what we believe will happen unless Mother Nature does something very cool to us or pipes burst or others such. So, yes, the, the fourteenth could be the last day of school for students.
And it'll be a full day, not a half day.
That, different, different thought.
Yeah, we gotta have that discussion.
It'll be a twelve-hour day.
Went on a Friday. We're really mean, aren't we?
Let's make them go on Saturday.
All right. Any other thoughts on that discussion item?
I have a thought.
Yes, please, Bill.
I strongly object. I think all I hear is there's not enough time in the year to teach the kids what they need to learn. We just, we lose one day off the calendar, so what they were gonna do on that Monday gets moved to that Friday, so how much of that week gets used? And I think it sends a signal to the community about value for our dollars. So I, I strongly suggest that the teachers work the days that they're contracted.
Oh, the teachers work, that's not the issue.
Well, and the kids being in school for those days.
So, Bill, you're sitting on the right side of the table.
Yeah, he joined, joined your comrades, yeah, over here, yeah, yeah.
Nazi, the calendar Nazi.
Well, you know that from me from before I was on the board, so.
That's why we're taking the pulse.
Okay. So am I getting the pulse that there's not support on that end of the table?
You know, I, I'm not sure I feel strongly about a Monday thing, but I, I, I hear what you, you're saying, Bill, and honestly, I, I, I'm surprised that we're down to a hundred and seventy-five day calendar. We used to be a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and seventy-six.
Well, this year we're a hundred and seventy-five.
If the days were.
Oh.
Yeah, we just voted on a hundred and seventy-six days for next year. When we, when I was a proponent of getting rid of half-days, I really don't recall being a proponent of shrinking the calendar. So, yeah, no, I agree with Bill. I think that we talk about utilizing our calendar better and so, but a Monday is a weird day when, but, so we'll cross that bridge when it comes to it, but.
Bob and I both want to say something.
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't we let Bob go first, Colleen?
So, um, what you're saying at that end of the table is right.
Thank you.
In terms of we need more time, right? When, this is gonna sound contradictory to what I just said. What I wanna tell you is it's gotta be productive time. So when we start nitpicking about when the last student day is, what the conversation needs to be more, it needs to be more about what those days look like. And I would, I would say to you, when we start talking about the contract and negotiating that contract, that we need to think about time. And I don't mind having the time to work with staff because from the achievement presentation that you just heard this evening, the only way we're gonna move student achievement is to get more collaborative planning time for teachers. And we're not getting it out of the current contracted arrangement. So when the next negotiation cycle begins, I really think that we need to look at that. We can't get the job done well, given the constraints that we're under with time and the current arrangement. That's all I'm gonna say. I know I'm gonna have a lot of parents that when you start talking about that last week of school, uh, you know, everybody and his brother that's in, um, business of running camps and what have you, they're, they're into that week already. So attendance is gonna be an issue no matter what we do with that last week.
All right, so we'll see that next, oh, do you still wanna say something, Colleen?
No, I, I just wanna say that what we're asking our teachers to do right now between the common core, I, I, just really emphasizing what Bob said, it's between the common core and some of the other initiatives. They just need that time to do that professional development work. And what we'll get out of that next year, we'll get that payback later. You know, we won't have.
Until Tuesday.
Childcare happening on that Monday, but we'll get the payback from teachers next year in their ability to implement instruction in, in better ways. So I think it's worth it.
We will see that next month then perhaps?
There was not indifference on this topic.
No, there was not. So, speaking of calendars, seven, action matters, seven point one, adopt local calendar.
I'm actually ready to move the adoption.
Thank you, Kathy, do I?
For the first time, probably.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa. All those in favor of adopting the calendar that is in our packet as seven point one? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, thank you. Um, seven point two personnel, we have two personnel matters, seven point two point one. Request for point two F D E special education position reduction and seven point two point two leave of absent request for point two F D E special education triple E position. Do we need to, do we, should we discuss these here or during executive session?
I can do it, it'd probably be easier in executive session.
Okay. How, what is the view of the board on that? Any objection?
No.
All right, let's move that down to eleven point one then. Uh, seven point three committee assignments. We postponed this from last meeting, so although the hour is late, we really need to make assignments to these committees. I have six committees. I'll, I'll run through them, if I miss one, then we'll add to it, in no particular order. Let's deal with the easy one first. I don't know the official name of the committee, but it's the food service folk, uh, committee that are examining the food service. Paul Lambertson has, has gratefully agreed to continue on that, so do we need to make a motion for each one?
Um, that or you can move the slate when you're done.
Okay, so I, I, I think we should leave Paul on that. Facilities, Kathy, I think you have served on that in the past, are you willing to do that again? Do we need one or two board members on that?
I've been on it as well.
Would you like to continue on that? Great, thank you, Lisa. Technology, Paul was on it up until his tenure ending, so I think we have one open slot for that. Is there any interest from any new member, maybe, that wants to be on the technology committee?
I'll take it over.
All right.
Everyone's okay with that?
Thank you, Bill.
You'll have fun with that.
Policy committee?
Kathy?
I won't take that personally.
I'm, I'll be there for C S S U board so I could double up.
Is there any reason why she couldn't double up her representation?
No, she'll just get two votes.
Okay. Would, does anyone have any objection or ratification of Colleen's willingness to be on the policy committee on our behalf in addition to C S S U's behalf? All right, great. I'll keep you in the loop, Kathy.
Can we revisit facilities?
Yeah.
Bill would like to be on it and I'm happy not to be on it, so.
I would like to be, I will be if you don't wanna be.
So, so I, I, I withdraw nominating myself.
Okay.
And nominate Bill.
Okay. You, you wanna take technology?
No.
She doesn't do that either.
I, you want me on technology, that would be a bad, that'd be a big.
Thank you. Um, I have Pi written down, is that, is it Pi?
Yes.
We've, we've sort of informally done that.
Yeah.
I go to a lot of meetings, I'm happy to join the Pi ones when I can. The problem is the timing often and childcare.
Take it when we can get to it.
Okay.
The timing meaning the Monday, the timing or the time in the evening?
Time in the evening usually, it just, I, do, do you still move them around?
No, they always start at six.
Six, okay.
Six on the first Monday of the month.
Okay.
Is a presentation seven to eight.
And we usually do have childcare.
Okay.
She often shows up and has no children to take care of and then she leaves, but.
Okay. I, I will try to keep that in mind, especially if one of my neighbors could give me a ride.
And then, Keith, I wonder from the Pi point of view, maybe you have, while we nominate for next year, have a point person, so you have one person. So if this board is missing, then the, the connection's still made, there's some reporting elsewhere happening at Pi meetings? Because I think that's important to make that, that loop a full circle.
Okay. All right. And then the last one on my list is negotiations. I have served on that in the past and I am willing to do that again. I have had some expressions from central office that they would like to have some experienced people on the committee, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to. So if there's a clamoring for someone else to serve on it, I'm all ears.
Well, and I'm gonna do it for C S S U, so I'll be there.
Greatly appreciate your efforts, Keith.
Any objection?
But if we have, if we're having, um,
My understanding of the C S S U discussion was that we can have more than one attend the training session that is being held at the end of this month, and I wasn't sure about the end of May one. But we, there's no decision yet, but my understanding is the recommendation of the working group that has been working with the teacher representatives to formulate a process, my understanding is their recommendation is gonna be one representative from each board at the table.
So.
Which is, which is a change from past practice.
So I'm not comfortable with that recommendation, because I feel like, um, the teacher contract is gonna drive our budget for the next four years or three years. And I feel like we get into that, the, the decision that is made there is so huge for our work here on the board. And frankly, the last time, we were in the loop, in the loop, in the loop, in the loop, and then there was a vote, and then we were told about it after.
Well, that's a communication issue.
No, it's a, it's an issue that if we truly are gonna get the decision we want, I think it's important that we have the representation on the committee. If we have one person representing this committee at the, our board, I, I'm really nervous about that.
Are you count, not counting me as being?
Well, I, I mean, I, I know you're the C S S U rep, but I do feel like, and I, I feel this about all of the, all of the school districts. But I'm thinking unless we could have an open meeting, I am really uncomfortable with a smaller negotiating team than a bigger negotiating team.
Well, and you're not the only one. I think that's a sentiment that we've heard in various pockets around the supervisory union. And part of the reason that we would really advocate for an open meeting is to increase comfort level with the whole process.
Right, right. No, I mean, if it's an open meeting, I will feel differently, but if it is not an open meeting, I will feel, I will advocate that we not take the recommendation of this subcommittee, that I'm not sure how people got on that subcommittee.
It was a process that started a year and a half.
It's a C S S U board committee.
Yeah, okay, but I, I don't remember that we, you know, elected people to be on it or, or identified people. People just maybe volunteered, which is fine. But I think that if you really wanna have representation or wanna know what boards think, I'm telling you what I think from this board, that I would feel more comfortable having a second, and, and I know you're on there, Colleen, but I feel like you're in there as C S S U, which is a different role than necessarily this board, that I would feel.
I don't know, I'm, I'm having a hard time not seeing myself as representing the board, so, you know, we're, we're a team, whoever is there. It's a team effort.
I don't think there's any debate that if the negotiations are not open, that we can come back and say that there's gonna be two reps. They heard that yesterday during our, our discussion, that that would be a legitimate concern with the board.
So at this point, because we're looking at a training situation, I think that, and, and I'm thrilled Colleen's doing it. I'm thrilled Keith's doing it, but I, I, I think that we might wanna have our, our backup rep.
I got a question, if, if hypothetically, if the three of us were at that training session.
We'd have to warn it.
You'd have to warn it, yeah.
Which we can do, that's not a big deal.
And if someone shows up, then they sit through the training?
Yeah. Because we won't, there's nothing confidential about the training.
Okay.
So, it's not a big deal.
Well, I didn't hear, correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't hear any particular objection to a number of board members from each of the S U's boards attending the training session.
Yeah, and the, I mean, the, the purpose of the April thirtieth training, and training, I don't know if that's the right word, but, you know, what we wanted to do was.
Facilitated conversation.
Facilitated conversation, was just to, to, um, bring someone in to help us talk about what works. You know, what, what, what works from his observations. And then the part of the process that we need to do over the next month, six weeks, leading up to the May twenty-eighth meeting, is try to come to some agreement on ground rules. And ground rules are not positions of the boards, the ground rules are. And ground rules are not positions of the boards. The ground rules are how we have conversation. It's how we, communication, it's who, when the meetings are going to happen. Who's going to be at the meetings, what communication happens out of the meeting and so forth. So those ground rules, hopefully we can come to some resolution on that by, um, the time everybody leaves uh, in June, but you know, we're hoping that May twenty eighth is, we can try to finalize that. That's a goal. And then there'll be summer work and obviously the board needs to have some, uh, time, board members need to have some time to um, discuss positions and, and so forth. And then in September, there would be, um, during our common topic would be a negotiations one oh one is what we were calling it for shorthand, but an overview of all elements of negotiations held for all board members in public meeting, uh, just to talk about what the process is and so forth. And, um, and then take it from there. And you know, the idea is that, you know, right now, and again, it's not finalized because we haven't come out with a recommendation and we haven't come out with ground rules, but there seems to be some agreement towards, moving towards a set schedule next year, which would probably at this point, just because of timing of trying to move things forward, would be, um, second and fourth Tuesday of the month. Um, and then, you know, hopefully we're done by June.
As the CSSU board chair and as a member of the committee that's working, would you have an objection to, in addition to you, two members of this board attending the meeting at the end of April and end of May?
I can't speak for myself.
In order to be in a position to be flexible, whatever the negotiating team comes, becomes in the fall.
I don't think there's any issue with the Heinzberg board deciding they want to have a contingent second named negotiator. And you'll make a decision when negotiations start, based on the ground rules.
I would like to add Bill to that.
They're involved.
Based, based on that, are you willing and able to attend the April twenty eighth and May thirtieth meetings? Okay. And then we as a board or you and I together can figure it out from there, once we know what the ground rules are. Okay? Alright, so now you need.
Well, I think it should be, it comes back to the board. I, I mean, I, I guess where I get really a little bit crazy about this maybe is the best way to describe it. It feels like we're being told how it's going to happen. If you, and we, again, it comes back to we're going to be responsible for that contract, so I feel like it's a big part of what we do. And it feels very much like it's taken away, kind of worked on by a very small committee, and then we're presented with it and we have to kind of pick up after we get the contract.
Lisa, I'd like to, um, offer a different way of looking at that. The way that we came to this point where there's a committee right now that has been working, meeting once a month since November, that came out of board work from everybody. There was identification of a committee to talk about how might we do it differently and so forth, and from that group came the identification of a small group to start the conversation. We didn't even know if the association would be interested in having a small conversation with a few people. We didn't know that they would be open to it. They were open to it. We met, we said, let's expand the group and we went from there. So it's not, and the recommendation hasn't come out yet. So.
Right, no, no.
There's nothing being taken.
No, no, but I, 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 I'm trying to protect against it. It, it, I really think that the board should have, we should, these are decisions that our board should be making, not being made by a committee that I didn't, don't remember voting on people representing us in a small committee.
I want to be clear about something. By law, you have to negotiate at the SU level. That, so it's not like it's an option for Heinsberg to negotiate on its own anyway.
Right, I understand that, but, but in terms of negotiating at SU level, I think that, I, I guess maybe this is more to our administrators, who I'm really having this conversation with. I do feel like we need to be part of that process in a way where, because we're the ones who ultimately, when there's thirty five people sitting in a room saying, why didn't you, why can't we put seventy thousand dollars, but, you know, in the budget at the drop of a hat, we're the ones that have to answer to that. So the negotiation results really impact that work.
And the results of the contracts goes, what's going to drive the budget for the next three years? And that's what we're going to have to sit with.
Absolutely.
So here's how I characterize it, because this, there was a hallway conversation on the way down though. The focus of the last eighteen months has been on the process. What can we do to improve the process? Because I, I'm sure you all remember, that process felt horrible by the end of it.
Horrible, horrible.
For everybody involved. We're trying to correct the issues around communication, around, um, having actual conversations at the bargaining table, a bunch of other goals. Aside from that, we haven't done the work yet. There's still work around goal setting for the board. There's the work of how are boards going to keep each other informed? Are we going to put, we're, you know, one of the steps Colleen referred to is having the collective executive session at the end of the CSSU meeting, so all thirty, potentially all thirty four board members are in there hearing the same thing, instead of me running around at the end of night trying to get all five boards up to speed at the same time, and so you hear from each other. There's also another piece, and this is either going to be the one oh one, or it's going to be Elaine's and my role, to help boards understand the people at the negotiating team are supposed to be the smartest people in the process. They're also the ones that see how the goals evolve. And that's the hard part and disconnect with people that aren't at the negotiation table. So one of the things we have to figure out is how to keep people feeling like they're part of that and understanding how those decisions get made. Because we can offset all the goals we want, but that's negotiations, there's, in my opinion, there's never a winner in negotiations. There's give and take and compromise. Um, and some things get compromised that not all board members agree on. And, and not all teachers agree on.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that's, I, I know it's frustrating because we hadn't gotten, been successful with that yet. Um, but there's another side of this that you, we still are developing, is the work plan around negotiations. What are those key points and what's every board member's role in that process? And so hopefully we can get that to you and that will also give you, oh, some more reassurance, whether
Great.
there's two people, one people, or five people.
Right. Thank you.
So for the time being, Bill and I will be the negotiations committee reps to the SU. And we will undertake whatever preliminary training or seminar participation is required until such time as the SU through the various boards decide how the nego, the actual negotiation team is comprised. And then we'll cross that bridge when we get.
Cross that bridge.
Alright. So that's six committees. Did I miss any?
No.
Okay, so do we need a motion to approve that slate, which I'm not going to recite because I can't remember it? Okay, can someone make a motion? Second? Thank you Kathy. Second?
Second.
Second, second. Thank you Lisa. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, thank you very much for getting through that. Alright, couple more short ones, I think. Uh, seven point five, resolution approval for updating financial account signature cards. Guidance from Cindy?
What? Do you know what that is?
Sorry to distract you.
I, I think I do, but I'd be making it up. I believe it's who can sign on your bank accounts and who can, um, but that would be over certification.
Because was Paul on it?
That's my guess, if you're transferring.
I was going to say, is it in the folder?
Okay.
Could you look in the folder?
I do, I don't have the folder.
So who should be the signatories then?
Can I look at it?
My bet is it says.
Okay.
Um, my guess is it's the clerk and the board chair, but, or at least the clerk.
Keith Roberts, board chair.
Yeah, yeah.
It's me. Good, I have a new checkbook.
There's no money in it, so.
It's actually running a deficit.
Alright, I will sign that, but I, I don't, that, do we don't need a motion? I just. Or do we need a motion to approve me as a signatory?
It's a bank resolution for, yeah.
But it, it, it also says that here are the people that can sign off for you, so.
Yep.
Missy Ross, Bob Goodroad, Jeff O'Hare, and Laura Smith. You're the signer.
Oh, okay. Alright, so do we need, we need a motion to allow me to sign this?
I think we do.
Prove the resolution.
Let's say so moved, and Cindy can figure out what we were supposed to say.
I think that's a.
It's a bank resolution.
And it's a yearly.
I think you had a, you had to have.
Jessica's got it.
Well, I just drafted one of these this afternoon. Mine was a little shorter though. Um, so I have a second, I have a motion from Kathy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. I will sign it. Cindy, are you a notary?
No, I'm not.
Is anybody here a notary? Oh, oh, sorry, you're still here. Good. Because I am, but I'm not, so no, no, I can't.
But do we need the, do we need the, um?
You do not need a seal in Vermont.
Okay.
Yep, alright, so I'll sign that in a couple minutes. Seven point six, reaffirm code of conduct. This got postponed from last time too. Um, just to refresh the returning board members' memory and also to tell Bill, a few years ago, we adopted a code of conduct for the board's activities. It's in the package. Hopefully you've had a chance to read it or reread it. Um, it is a guideline for how we should conduct ourselves. And I think if we are willing, I would entertain a motion to reaffirm the code of conduct and then we would have to print it out and sign it.
I move that we reaffirm the code of conduct, sign it and post it in, um, the hallway at Heinsberg Community School.
Do I have a second to that? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So we will work on getting that.
Signed and, and that's what we used to do. We put it out in the hallway.
Alright, so we'll work on that when anyone has an opportunity to.
Or office or something.
To do so. I invite them to do that. Alright, uh, the next one, seven point seven, scheduling of a special meeting to uh, respond to the petition for the Australian ballot. Um, for the record, I think everybody knows on April eighth, which was Monday, I was informed, I assume in my role as board chair, that a petition was submitted to Missy Ross, Heinsberg's town clerk, with apparently the required number of signatures to demand a special meeting of the Heinsberg School District in order to address the question of whether the annual Heinsberg Town School District should be, uh, excuse me, whether the vote on the Heinsberg School District's budget should be adopted by Australian ballot as opposed to the annual meeting format that we use now. So I think I would open it to any comments or discussion about how to proceed clearly before we take any.
There's some dates though.
Uh, oh, sure, so.
So within fifteen days.
Within fifteen days.
We have to warn a meeting.
We have to warn a meeting. And that meeting needs to be held between thirty and forty days of when the board received the petition.
Which was the eighth.
So, which was the eighth. So the fifteen days should expire on the twenty second. That's the fourteenth day, so it, it could be the twenty third, but let's just say for prudence, it's the twenty second. So thirty to forty days from the twenty second gives us somewhere between May twenty two and June one.
Yeah.
As, uh, June eleven, excuse me, as, I'm sorry, June one, that should be June one, yeah, I wrote the wrong number down. Um, May twenty two and June one as the dates by which we would have to hold a meeting. We could hold it sooner. Just for people scheduling.
Uh, no, it has to be within the thirty. No sooner than thirty, no less than forty. So it has to be between oh five twenty two and oh six oh one.
It has to be?
In that. Yep. As I read this.
Okay, yep.
Five twenty two and six one?
Five twenty two and six one.
Yep.
And then.
No less than thirty days nor more than forty days.
And the twenty seventh is a holiday.
Twenty seventh is a holiday.
Twenty eighth is, um, negotiations training. So, how about the twenty ninth?
How about the twenty second? Or how about earlier in the week?
Twenty second is, um, there's a, a conference. We won't have our superintendent.
Oh, that's, yeah. I won't be here on the twenty second.
Uh, it sounds like May twenty ninth is, uh, becoming an attractive day.
You can also have the information maybe prior to that if.
Can we come down on maybe the date that we're going to hold the meeting and then we can talk about preparation for it? Is there any objection to May twenty nine as the date for the special meeting, and I would propose that it be held at seven o'clock in, uh, the gym at the school? Hearing no objection, I think that's what we should do. So May twenty nine, two thousand thirteen. Sandy's drafted notice says six thirty. Is there any feeling for any particular time?
I think seven is better for the general community.
Okay. Alright. Do we need to take action on fixing it that day and then we can discuss preparation? Alright, so can I have a motion to set the date of the special meeting for May twenty ninth, two thousand thirteen at seven o'clock in the Heinsberg Community School gym?
Uh, there is a concert. Are we talking about the twenty ninth?
Yep.
There's a concert that day. Six thirty to eight thirty.
We can move it, yeah.
Okay.
Concert by whom?
Like a kids' concert?
Yes.
So you could do maybe Tuesday or something?
We'd probably go the following week.
Has that been?
We can't.
We, no, we can go the following week. Yeah, let me worry about that, don't.
Well, I'm worried about the facilities problem, but I'm, the reason I'm asking who the concert is is I want parents to be able to come to this meeting.
That's why he's going to reschedule the concert.
I'll reschedule the concert.
Okay. Alright. I don't want to foreclose any community members' ability to attend the meeting. Alright, so again, I, I was inviting a motion to set space in the annual meeting, and I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to be able to prepare and present the board's view, if there is a board's view of this, which I suppose we should also talk about, whether there will be an official board position. In my line of work, not so much now, but in my old practice in Boston, we oft, often represented boards or directors in proxy contests, and we would always issue a proxy card that says, you know, you authorized to board, vote as the board recommends, and the board recommends that you do X. And so I don't know if we will be in a position at that meeting to say the board's recommendation is to vote yes or no.
I'm feeling out of gas if I don't know. This is an important discussion, so I don't know if we should try to schedule a special meeting. I mean, I'm really feeling out of gas for this discussion, and it's a really important one. Uh, we could try to jam through it, but.
I agree.
Maybe, yeah, I'll look at our calendars and maybe it's a possible week. We'll find the time for a special meeting, but.
So I guess what, what I'm hearing Kathy is maybe a special meeting of the board to discuss how we prepare for the May twenty ninth meeting?
Well, and also, I'm not sure, um, I'm not sure of my opinion about whether the board, this discussion, whether the board has a proxy or not.
Yep, and, and, and formulating whether the board should have a position, and then if the answer to that is yes, what it is.
I think, I don't know how other people are feeling, I don't know. Maybe it is a brief discussion. Doesn't seem like it is.
What's other people's view?
I think it's for the community to decide.
Yeah, I feel.
No, that's the way, I mean, honestly, that's actually the way I feel too, so maybe it's, we don't need a special meeting to all discover that we are the same vote.
I don't feel comfortable as a board member recommending, making a recommendation about that.
Okay.
There are pros and cons to either decision, so.
Okay, alright, I think that was a short discussion then. So then what preparation should we have for the special meeting? Should we hold a forum or some other type of informational meeting beforehand? Is that a worthwhile?
What would, what would that be about?
You know, a fight about Australian.
Fight about Australian ballot versus voice vote.
Right. I don't know what you would be discussing.
Okay.
Other than here are the pros and cons of an Australian ballot for it.
My, my concern, I, this is my concern. My concern is if the board doesn't have a position, and no matter what, I won't speak for the rest of you, no matter what I say to community members that I'm not speaking for the board, I feel like they're gonna hear what I say as a board position. And therefore, I feel like I can't say anything for six or seven weeks between now and May twenty-ninth about how people should vote. And, and that leaves me, I, I'm uncomfortable in that position of not being able to say anything.
I just think it's an odd construct that the board is in a situation where they are e- there is even an option to make a recommendation, in a way? Because if you recommend, oh, we think we should stay with Australian-
I think that's off the table.
Yes, but I'm just saying, just to get to your point again, though, like, I think that everybody can have an opinion about this, and it shouldn't even reflect back on you that you're a board member, any more than your opinion about whether Hannafords should have bought out Lantmans. You know what I mean? Because it, it does have an impact, I believe, on how easy it is to pass a school budget, because everybody's in the room and they're informed, but that's not really a great talking point. We're recommending that you stay with the town meeting because it's easier to pass a budget? Do you know what I mean? I think there's something just really awkward about the whole thing. And it gets back, too. This is a conversation for everybody, and every single person, person should have an opinion, and it shouldn't matter whether you're on the school board or not. I don't know. I mean, I, I just think it puts the board in a funny place. Not having the meeting, not having the meeting, having an opinion, not having an opinion. Just the way the whole thing is set up that allows the board to do a proxy, sets it up in a way that makes it look like you are the guardians of the town meeting. I don't know.
I, I, I don't think, I think that, we moved on from that. There, there won't be anything like that. But what my concern is a personal feeling that I have to remain silent.
But I don't think you do.
I don't think you do either.
Okay.
Yeah, like, as, as long as you qualify, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board.
Okay.
You can even say I'm not speaking as a board member and speaking as a, I mean, really, it is a vote about how this community wants to conduct its democratic business around passing a school budget.
And, and that's my point, because I'm a member of this community, too. So I have the right to vote at this meeting as well.
Right.
And, and I, I think I have my right to express my opinion to people and try to convince them one way or the other, but I'm cons- I, I will clearly convey to them, as I think and trust all of you will, you know, this isn't a board position. This is my personal position. But I, I hope people understand that, that the board is not taking a position of this.
And this meeting is a meeting of the board, though.
That's the weird part.
Yeah. And, but we would have a moderator, Dina would be our moderator.
It's a meeting of the school.
It's a meeting of the school district. It's more akin to the annual meeting than it is to one of these school board meetings.
Right.
Maybe we shouldn't even sit up front.
Well, that's actually what I was thinking.
That was kind of my question when I raised my hand earlier, is do you have to facilitate this, or do you merely have to facilitate the establishment of the meeting for the community to offer their petition? Because you are put in an impossible position as community members.
You, you just reminded me something that I thought about when I read the petition, which was someone needs to call Dina Monahan, because she's the one who's gonna run this meeting.
Yeah, we need to make sure she can do it on the twenty-ninth.
She has to articulate to the community what, in the hands behind the whole thing.
She's elected our school board moderator. She's, it's not, you just have somebody.
Number one, call Dina.
I think there are some things to be clear on, understanding about the process, because, and I don't know if anything's changed, but with Charlotte, it was, you voted the time you, but you still had to have a vote to vote to have Australian ballot. You couldn't decide on the floor to have Australian ballot. There's a second part they went through. Took a year, is what I'm saying.
Oh, really?
So I, I think there's all, there's gonna be a lot of clarifications about what does this vote mean, what's, what are all the steps across?
This is a vote to have the vote.
This is-
A vote to have the vote.
This is a vote.
Potentially, I may be misremembering if this happened.
Is this correct? This is, this is a vote.
I think you're right. Yeah. I think you are right.
No, no, I think that I-
To put on the agenda for our meeting next March, a vote.
She's right.
Yeah, to have the next one by ballot.
We already decided next year's date.
Yeah, but, but no, I think that what Missy said is that it would have to happen at the next meeting, or you could have, you could petition to have a special meeting. And maybe it is to, maybe it is to have another vote, but, you know, they got their ducks in an or, somebody did, um, to have this, this, so maybe it's a vote to have another vote. But I think that she said you could, you could petition to have a special meeting. And I thought that was to, to set it up so that it would happen next year.
We gotta clarify that with Missy, obviously.
Maybe you'd be clear on that.
Yep.
Let me text her. So we'll get some clarification.
Yep.
Which will be-
It, it sounds like then we've taken whatever action we needed to take, and we've had the discussion that we need to have. And I think then, subject to getting clarification on exactly what the, the vote at that special meeting will be, and subject to Dina hopefully being available to moderate it, we don't necessarily have anything we have to, we don't, excuse me, we do not have anything we have to do as a board, and, and we don't necessarily have to have any involvement personally.
You may wanna use a board corner, though, to have people understand what the, what's, one, that the petition's there.
Yep.
Two, when the vote is, and what the process is. It's not like your budget thing, it's non-position taking, but-
I'm happy to write that, but if you could get me some clarification on that open question, then I will draft something, and I can't promise that I'll edit by all four of you, but I'll at least run it by someone before I hit send.
I'm gonna raise another issue that may need to be addressed at this special meeting. If it is a vote to vote to have-
Australian ballot.
An Australian ballot. That would happen prior to our town meeting that has been warned for the following week.
Yep.
So-
School meeting.
School meeting.
So the school meeting, we would wanna have our school meeting before we had the Australian ballot vote.
You would have to.
So we'd have to, probably at the special meeting, change that meeting date.
Yep.
So that's another kind of new one. So I just wanna make sure that we don't lose track of that, because we'd look pretty fool, because we've warned it, we voted on it.
And then that begs the question of when, when we would hold the school meeting, informational meeting, that other towns hold in conjunction with town meeting.
Right.
Is that what we would do?
Well, there are dates, there are dates that are specified there. You'd probably do it the Monday night before, that's when everybody else does it.
Well, that's when our town meeting is.
That's what I'm saying, we'd have to coordinate it with town.
And they do take turns with the town, just like, you know, everyone else does. Yeah.
There's a lot of special meetings, I like that.
What a very special office.
That's what administrators do, right?
Our town meetings last like four hours.
Look at Bob, look at Bob.
Our town meetings last like three to four hours.
He's gonna mess this.
Well, in the other communities, they take turns. One year the school goes first, one year the town goes first.
Is, is there anything else that we can discuss and answer tonight that would, that